Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh area school district board of education regular meeting for Wednesday, December 4th, 2019. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Would you please call the roll?
Carolyn?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Harner?
Here.
Olmsted?
Here.
Pechal?
Here.
Selaji?
Here.
Thank you very much. We have two students who will be leading us this evening in the pledge of allegiance. They are Jayden Mortar and Sanai Pettis from Webster Stanley. Sometimes we introduce these students and Mr. Marshall just wanted to introduce them to the group here tonight before they lead us in the pledge.
Okay. So, just sharing a little positivity with you this evening. These two young ladies have really done some great things recently. Sanai was the winner of the essay contest for the eighth grade manufacturing field trip that they went on. And she was honored at the downtown Rotary and was able to have a luncheon with people that she toured with and myself and her teacher. So, that was really a lot of fun and she wrote a very well-done essay. And Jayden here, eighth grader also, and she was nominated by her teachers to be the leading howler, because we're the wolves. And she, it's basically like a student of the week thing that she was nominated for by her teachers. So, they've both been doing great things and I just want to brag on them a little bit. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, ladies?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are a school district, an educational institution, and we value students. We'd like students first. And so, that's why it's always so important to us to have students represented at our meetings, leading us in the pledge and in many other ways. We have many other students representing our district today and the many successes they've enjoyed through their art in our district. So, I want to thank Jayden for coming, bringing along someone as your driver, making sure you're home safely. And the same to Sanai. Thank you so much for coming tonight and bringing your driver along. You're more than welcome to stay for the meeting, but if you have other homework or more important things to do, certainly understand. All right, thank you again. At our meetings, we do like to recognize positive activities and results in our school district, and tonight is no exception. A couple of times a year, we set aside part of our meetings to recognize those students who have excelled in the art world, excelled in terms of special recognition that they've received. And part of that recognition is displaying their artwork on the halls of this building, both in this boardroom, I don't see any of those, I guess I do see one over there tonight, but around this big square. And I saw a number of you earlier tonight walking around to enjoy the artwork that your children or grandchildren have produced. So, let us begin with the art recognition. We are honoring those students from the west side of Oshkosh tonight, so all the west side elementaries, middle schools, and of course, west high school. We have special recognition up on the screen. Each of you will be receiving a signed certificate showing the artwork that you produced that led to your being recognized tonight. So, when you, when your name is called, please come forward to the edge of the table there next to Mrs. Selaji, where the ladies had just led the pledge of allegiance, and I will be happy to present you with your certificate. So, let us begin with, these appear to be out of order.
I have them for you.
Oh, well, perfect, okay. They're not by school, that's why I said they were out of order, but I'm always glad that Mrs. Cart, Dr. Cartwright has my back, so go right ahead.
So, for our first group of students are going to be coming from Oshkosh West High School. Our very first student tonight is Lily Mott. Our second student tonight from West High School is Emma Carpenter. Our next student is Summer Ketner. Also from Oshkosh West, Laura Funnel. Our next person is Haley Schmitz. And our last student from Oshkosh West High School is Sierra Johnson. Our next group of students come from South Park Middle School. Tia, there we go. We're going to move to Tia Brewer. And our last student from South Park Middle School is Noah Lee. Our next group of students are coming from Carl Trager Middle School. Janiah Ford. And our last student from South, for Carl Trager Middle School is Amelia Bell. Our next group of students comes from the Alps Charter School. And last, but not least, Samuel Kirchner. Our next student comes from Shapiro STEM Academy. Our next student comes from Oakwood Elementary School. Harper Tritt. Our next is actually is one piece of artwork, but it has multiple students and they're all from Carl Trager Elementary School.
Collaborative piece.
A collaborative piece. Grace Lynn Mecca. I believe that was Morgan, correct?
No.
No, oh, Morgan Spar. Sorry about that, Riley. Amaya Antonio. And last but not least, Nora Schindel. Our next two students come from Roosevelt Elementary School. And our second student is Jaziba Rochell. Our last student of the evening to be recognized is from Franklin Elementary School, and this is Elia King.
She's coming this way. This is always such a fun night because we have a variety of students from different schools, different grade levels, and all exhibiting their talents and their successes in the school district. We will make sure that those who are unable to attend tonight will receive their certificates, but we also want to give a special thanks not only to the parents who came tonight and who support your children and our schools, but also our wonderful art teachers who nurture and promote success of all of our students throughout the K-12 art program, pre-K-12 art program. So, let's give every one of those people a thank you. We want to thank you for coming. We know that there may be other activities tonight that you want to partake in, so if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome to do so, but you are also welcome to take leave at any time. So, thank you again for coming.
Did you get you the right one though?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, you got two. All right, thank you very much.
Dr. Cartwright, is your mic working?
Yes.
Because it didn't, it wasn't, it didn't sound like it was amplified when you were...
Oh.
I don't know, I just...
The school board president has the responsibility on occasion to speak for the board. I usually don't write out exactly what I'm going to say when it comes to the board president's report, but tonight is not a, not a usual night. This has not been a usual week, and so that I don't forget the things I wanted to share this evening, I have written out my statement. First of all, school safety is our top priority. We are sincerely grateful for the actions of school resource officer Wissing, along with the Oshkosh Police Department, the Oshkosh Fire Department, and the EMTs, the Oshkosh Auxiliary Police, the UW Oshkosh Police Department, the Amro Police Department, the Wisconsin State Patrol, Wisconsin DNR Wardens, the Red Cross, the Winnebago County Emergency Management Team, Cobuson Buses and Drivers, the Mayad Kamar Mosque, Lourdes Academy, and all of those who helped with the incidents at Oshkosh West High School yesterday, December 3rd. Along with the district staff, especially those from Oshkosh West High School, Perry Tipler Middle School, and the executive team and the central office members under the outstanding leadership of Superintendent Dr. Vicky Cartwright in protecting the safety and well-being of the Oshkosh West High School students and staff. We truly wish Officer Wissing a complete recovery. We want to thank the West High parents and the grandparents for their patience during the reunification process at Perry Tipler Middle School. The late President John F. Kennedy stated in July of 1963, quote, "Children are the most, are the world's most valuable resource and its best hope for the future," end of quote. His statement holds true today and was played out in the prolonged hugs, kisses, and tears as students were reunited with family yesterday at Perry Tipler. It is important for us to remain united. We ask you now to stand alongside the board as a sign of unity with Officer Wissing and the Oshkosh High community and as a sign of deep appreciation to all of those who contributed to the health, safety, and well-being of the West community. You are our heroes, and we will forever be grateful for everything that you did yesterday. Thank you so very much. Please join me in standing as a sign of unity for this community and Oshkosh West High Since our last board meeting, I've had the opportunity to visit a couple of our schools. I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Q. and Ms. A. at Oshkosh North High School for the great job they do in the job skills program over there with our, our students. They invited me to join them for Thanksgiving dinner. All I had to do was bring dessert, and we had a nice conversation, so I want to give a shout out to those staff members and those students. I've also had a chance to attend a couple of concerts this holiday season because the use of the Alberta Kimball Auditorium is so vital to this community and because our school gymnasiums, for the most part, no longer can accommodate the large number of people who want to attend the events that involve our students, the Alberta Kimball gets booked quite early, and so the holiday, the so-called holiday concerts usually begin before Thanksgiving. So, I want to thank the students at Carl Trager and those at, I've lost the other school I attended, I think it was Lakeside. But please look at our school calendar, our school district calendar, and if you can work it into your schedules to attend a concert, whether that's an orchestra concert, a choir concert, a band concert, or an elementary school, or a middle school concert, or musical, please do. Our students would appreciate it, and I think you'll be amazed at the talent that these students have to offer as their way of giving back to our community. So, thank you very much. With that, I will turn the agenda over to Dr. Cartwright for her good news report and her calendar.
Thank you very much, Dr. Harazog. So, we're going to start off this evening with some very happy, good news, and then close with a very sincere, heartfelt message. I want to start right away over here at Washington Elementary School. Kindergarteners at Washington Elementary became scientists tasked with exploring how to warm up a frozen playground. They used a paper model of a town surrounded by mountains and a lamp to represent the sun. They then had to explore and figure out how to use their materials to warm up the frozen playground. For many of us, snow is a very familiar event, but for others, it is new and exciting. Rama, a fifth grader at Merrill Elementary, recently came to us from Tanzania and experienced her first snowfall this month. The Merrill community was excited to celebrate the first snowfall together. Additionally, fifth graders at Merrill recently celebrated World Kindness Day by doing random acts of kindness and checking them off as they completed them. The students also wore cardigans to school on November 13th in honor of Mr. Rogers and his vision for everyone to be kind. South Park Middle School hosted its second career exploration luncheon for interested seventh graders. This month's guest was Kathy Clough, Sales Director for the Oshkosh Convention and Visitors Bureau. She taught about her career and all the great things going on in Oshkosh. South Park also took time to recognize staff members for their support of the Panther Way: Be Respectful, Responsible, and Safe. As a thank you, the staff were treated to a breakfast that included donations from Starbucks and the Big Apple Bagel. And last, but not certainly not least, Ezekiel Lee, a South Park seventh grader, and his brother Edward Lee, a Lakeside fourth grader, represented their schools well when they led the pledge of allegiance at a recent city council meeting. Great job, students! Many student athletes at Oshkosh West have recently been recognized for their accomplishments. A special congratulations to the following Wildcats. Anika Johnson, a senior at West for signing a letter of intent to play softball at Toledo University. And Riley Frey, a senior at West for signing a letter of intent to play baseball at the University of Wisconsin-Milwaukee. Additionally, two of our seventh graders, Alex Dyken and Sam Gibson, recently had a birthday party. In lieu of gifts, they asked their friends to donate money to be used to buy city bus passes for students in need at Oshkosh West. The group donated $600 to this great cause. We are so proud of these future Wildcats for their generosity. Third graders at Shapiro STEM Academy took on a STEM and literacy challenge that celebrates arts, literacy, engineering, and Thanksgiving all in one. The classes studied the book Balloons Over Broadway, which is the story of the founder of the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. Students decided to create a balloon float based on a favorite storybook character, then wrote a piece of writing explaining what character inspired the balloon float and why. Juniors and seniors in the communities program at Oshkosh North High School have been working on creating videos to emphasize the importance of social connectedness in our world today. Throughout this project, the students have been working in groups to address stereotypes being put on senior citizens, veterans, and teenagers. The goal of the project is to break down the barriers between generations and groups. Oshkosh area school district students understand what it means to be a part of a community. Culinary arts students from Oshkosh West High School recently made 150 pies to donate to Father Carr's for his annual Thanksgiving meal. We are so grateful for this partnership and the opportunity to give back to our community. Great job, Oshkosh West! The entire Oshkosh area school district community is committed to making meaningful connections with all students. Each day, thousands of our students start and end their day on a school bus. Our Cobuson bus drivers are one of the first people students interact with during the day, and we empower them to provide positive reinforcement to students. This year, one driver for our Oshkosh Early Learning Program was, has embraced the opportunity to connect with students and is making an incredible difference in the lives of our students. At the start of the school year, Joanne, Bus Route 1419, to and from Davis Childcare Center, asked our staff for greeting ideas and what they used in the classroom. The staff shared their visuals with her, and she has been offering a greeting to children as they get on the bus each and every day. Thank you, Joanne, and all of our bus drivers for all that you do for our students. Perry Tipler Middle and the Alps School recently recognized first quarter awards for academic and citizens excellence. Congratulations, students, and keep up the great work! Oshkosh area school district families were recently able to participate in an invitation-only winter boots and snow pants event. Families in need were given winter apparel thanks to the generosity of many local businesses and organizations, thanks to the J.J. Keller Foundation, Oshkosh Corporation Foundation, Oshkosh Area School District Education Foundation, and the Community Clothes Closet of Appleton. Additionally, the event was made possible thanks to many volunteers, including those from the Oshkosh North Black Student Union Group and Oshkosh Defense. For the past six years, the Oshkosh Chamber of Commerce has coordinated the Fall Interview Thon held at Oshkosh North and West High Schools for juniors interested in finding positions or perfecting their interview skills. This year, 126 interviews with area employers were held with over 15 employers participating. We are grateful for this partnership and the valuable experience it provides to our As Superintendent, I'm committed to being present and engaged in our schools and throughout Oshkosh. On the screen, you're going to see just a few examples of where I've been spending my time, but please remember, one week of it was Thanksgiving, hence it's a little bit light in the past couple of days I've been occupied with other activities. Yesterday, our district experienced a horrific event that involved an officer-involved shooting with one student at West High School. This event has impacted our school community and our community at large. While it was an awful event, our community has responded with overflowing support. We have so many items and services provided, it's allowing us to remain focused on supporting our students and our staff members. In addition, we've had so many community members who continue to provide support to us. We are also grateful for our partnerships with our local law enforcement and first responder agencies. We are most proud of our staff members, students, parents, guardians, and caregivers of our students for their actions. Our staff members and students made the right choices as they followed and implemented our safety protocols. We also thank our Oshkosh West families for following our safety procedures and their patience and cooperation during the reunification process. There are just so many people we are enormously thankful for and grateful towards. Today, we started our healing process. Our thoughts are with all of those that were involved. Resources and information is regularly being shared with our families and being posted on the school district's website. On behalf of the Oshkosh area school district, we give our sincerest thank you to our school community and our community at large, as well as the many other organizations that are assisting us. We will persevere, persevere through this experience. We are going to get through this, and we know that we will become a stronger community. So, we are again internally grateful and thank everyone who is there supporting us, our families, our students, and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright, and thank you for your strong leadership during this challenging time which none of us thought we would ever face. We are grateful for all of our staff who did, who did the right thing, and our students as well, so thank you. Are there any other district administrator supplemental reports this evening?
Not this evening.
Okay. Are there any committee reports this evening, from the board members?
Just me, I guess.
All right then, non-agenda related public forum.
No, no, I...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said no.
The Legislative Committee had its second meeting on Tuesday, November 26th. The first thing we covered was the Wasby, Wisconsin Area School Board Association Legislative Advocacy Conference, which was held in Stevens Point on November 2nd. And the items that were covered are advocate for students, trends in school resources and equity, education, public opinion in Wisconsin, state financial rendition, and K-12 funding. And all those presentations are available on the Wasby... And all those presentations are available on the Wasbee website. The committee discussed the importance of maintaining, the committee being Legislative Committee, discussed the importance of maintaining relationships with our legislators. Invitations to legislators, to events, meetings, and tours, or to hand out awards are always to get them involved in schools. The second item, and I want to stress that this was held on November 26th, long before the events of yesterday, but we discussed school safety. And what brought that on is I happened to catch a Santa Calida coverage about 10 minutes in it when it happened, and I was hooked on it. I couldn't turn away, and I was watching it, and I thought, we have to do something. This can't keep happening. And so I thought we should maybe bring this up at the Legislative Committee about passing some sort of resolution or something that the board can present to our legislators and our governor and our senators and representatives about school safety. So we decided that we're going to start working on that. We have nothing present, but we're going to see what we can come up with through our committee to present to the board. And then finally, the third thing we did was I just gave a little legislative update, and then we kind of talked about how that will or will not affect our district. The governor signed four educatively-related bills into law, about a week and a half, or two weeks. The first one modifies the eligibility criteria for the Minority Teacher Loan Program, Wisconsin Act 35. Wisconsin Act 39 allows a public or private school to provide warning to students before a fire, tornado, or school safety incident drill. Wisconsin Act 44 creates an alternative pathway to initial licensure as a special education teacher. And Wisconsin Act 43 converts teaching licenses based on reciprocity into Tier Two licenses and allows such licenses to become Tier Three lifetime licenses after the completion of six semesters of teaching experience. Then Board Member Carlin gave a little report on her... What we did is we divided up our two representatives and one state senator between us, and we're going to make contact with them and establish a relationship. And she had Michael Schrauf, with she had coffee with, and they discussed work on the Facility Advisory Committee. I was assigned, and hence that I have sent him a couple of emails, and I'm waiting for a response. So, Corin, if you're listening, I'm reaching out to you. And Board Member Sajian has spoken with Dan Fion and plans to schedule a meeting with them in the next near future. The future meeting agenda items is we will be discussing the resolutions that are going before the Delegate Assembly at the Wasbee Convention in January, before we bring those to the board, the entire board, for a vote. And our next meeting is going to be on the 12th, I believe, to get that discussed before we approve it at the December 18th board meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. Evans. Does anyone else? Mrs. Garner?
So, Facilities and Finance met on November 21st, and we discussed two issues. The first was the FabLab grant. So, we finally are at a place where we have all the three components that are needed to be able to move forward with that. We needed an internal champion, an external champion, and we needed the key partnerships. They are finally in place. I think it's been 12 years, but they're all there now. And let's see, Oshkosh Area School District and First Wave Robotics have a longstanding and supportive relationship, and the Oshkosh Area School District Technology and Engineering Department at North, along with Wave and their business partners, are ready to take the next steps in integrating a real-world STEM and manufacturing skills into their curriculum. So that's what this FabLab is going to provide for us. WEDC is supporting the community and school district partnerships through grant awards of up to $25,000 with a $25,000 match. The proposal is to just repurpose and remodel a portion of Oshkosh North that exists but is not currently being used, and accommodate a state-of-the-art FabLab. The drawings of what the FabLab would look like were shared with the committee. The space would accommodate between 20 to 30 students. There was a quote from Myron, we only have one, we requested more, but right now, the one from Myron is coming in at about 40 grand, as well as pro bono for portions of the project. Funding sources would include CTE set aside, Perkins funding, beach endowment, and community sponsorships, and resources via Wave Robotics. At this point, Myron, Dishar Millwork, and Whitsky Electric have all agreed to sponsor the work in the FabLab. And Oshkosh Corporation wants to make sure the district is supporting this before they make a commitment. It was suggested that one more quote from Kerry said that FabLab grant requirement commitments include a letter of commitment from the board president or a board resolution, collaboration within the Oshkosh Area School District departments to start and complete the project prior to the year, start of the 2021 school year, funding match for equipment that comes directly from the Oshkosh Area School District, funding from the school district source to repurpose and remodel the space, and a letter of commitment from the Oshkosh First Wave Robotics Board to use connections, network, and resources to enhance the opportunities to students. The grant submission is due December 12th, which is coming up quickly, to be able to access that $25,000. The total cost of the project would be approximately 200 to 300 grand. Equipment is movable, so the location is not a concern. This is a Oshkosh Area School District initiative located at North. The move would also help Alps and Tipler open up more teams for Lego League, and there would not be a lot of equipment in the space since the space would be for projects. The space was described as a media center for technology. This is a huge opportunity that'll have a big impact with a small investment. Okay, so the committee was in support of moving this forward, and a resolution will be introduced at the December 4th board meeting tonight. And then the second, that went almost the whole time, the whole hour of our meeting. So then we quickly ran through choir risers. We need them desperately. Julie Conrad shared information with committee regarding district risers. The condition is reaching a point where there are significant safety concerns, especially at South Park, Tipler, North, and West. An inventory of the risers was completed showing approximate year of purchase. There are not a lot of companies that make specialized equipment. Signature seems to be the preferred model due to easier setup. Not all risers need to be replaced due to the fact that some risers are no longer needed. Most performances, as noted before, take place at Alberta Kimball. The catalog price would be $173,386. But this is not the actual quote. Julie will be working on getting a quote before January price increases. It was recommended to do the entire replacement with the budget surplus for this year. Safety is the driver behind replacing risers. We tabled the custodial contracted services until our December meeting. We ran out of time. Our next meeting will be December 19th.
Thank you, Mrs. Garner. Does anyone else have a board committee report? Two very involved committees, lots going on in these committee meetings. Thank you. All right. There aren't any other committee reports, then? We will go on to the non-agenda-related public forum. We have two people who signed up in advance to speak this evening. When I call your name, please, you may come up and sit at the table, clearly state your name and address, and the topic you wish to address. If you are acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. State clearly and concisely the matters of concern. Please limit your comments to the time allotted, which is three minutes. And remember that the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 424-0160 to direct you to the appropriate administrator. We have two people who have signed up tonight. The first is Glenn Rayberg.
Hello.
Hello.
If you please state your name and your address.
My name is Glenn Rayberg, and I'm here from the Wisconsin Department of Justice at 17 West Main Street in Madison, Wisconsin. I'm the Deputy Director of the Office of School Safety, and I just wanted to take this opportunity, with the board meeting present while I'm here, to publicly applaud the actions and conduct of the staff and students that I have met during the couple of days that I have been here. I have been nothing but incredibly impressed with the professionalism, preparation, concern, and love that the staff have shown to the students, and the actions that have taken place here. And as a school board, you need to know what wonderful people you have working for you. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and a public thank you and acknowledgement of the incredible work that's happening here in this school district. Wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rayberg. Next is Julio Solomon.
Hi. Julia Solomon, 1320 Snowden Drive, Oshkosh. I'm a parent of a West student who was at school yesterday. Her last words to us last night was, "Mom, it hasn't sunk in yet." So, I not only want to thank all of you for all of the training, I have no idea what Alice stands for, and I have no idea whatever. My daughter comes home, she goes, "I know what I do." I ask her every day, "Do you know what to do?" And she goes, "Yeah, Mom, we've been trained. Alice." I'm like, "Okay." And it did happen, and I was scared out of my wits at work. Her teacher, I sent him an email thanking him. She said, "Yep, we barricaded the classroom, and he just continued to teach." And I said, "Oh, how did that make you feel?" "No, it was good. It distracted us." And I asked him, I said, "Well, how was, you know, the teacher?" "Oh, he was cool." You know, so the calmness, I think the gentleman mentioned before how professional and well-trained. I don't know what that training involves. All I know is my daughter was safe. And as haphazard it is to my work schedule that there was no school today, I think those last words last night, "Mom, it hasn't sunk in yet." Today was that day where we got to talk about it. And so I want to thank all of you, the teachers, our resource officer, I wish him the best, our teachers, the bus drivers. My daughter said they were stuck in traffic for 30 minutes just going to Tipler. I don't care. She was out of that school. All of the community members around, I know some of her classmates evacuated right away. I don't know what else to say, other than as a parent... Oh, the other thing is, I also really appreciate the million and one texts and phone calls that you all sent. I'm not complaining. That is not a complaint, by all means. It was so good to be informed. And yes, it was awesome. The place where I work, the Winnibego County Public Health Department, did send staff to help out and volunteer, and I was thankful for them as well. And I'm probably going over my three minutes, but...
No, you have 20 seconds.
Just, thank you. And I wish I wasn't here to thank you. So at some point, change has to be made that is larger than what this board can do or does. But, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, and then we move on to the agenda-related public forum, and we have one person signed up for that, and that's also Julia.
This is a non-teary one. I'm here also to thank the board, and I don't know who else was involved. I was part of the Faculty Advisory Committee, and we met for six evenings, you know, 20-plus hours plus the homework we had to do. And I just want to thank the process. The process was very well laid out. It was very organized. I learned so much, and I'm an involved parent in this district, and I did not know what I didn't know. And by participating in those, and I made every single one of those meetings, it just... I can't even imagine what you all have to absorb as a board member, just as a community member, as part of that committee, and one little piece of what you guys do. So much data, rich data, that really shows where we are in terms of the facilities and our schools. And thank you for including the voice of community in those conversations and respecting the voices, and sometimes we didn't agree, and sometimes, you know, we did, and having that avenue for community members, and we were a very diverse group, to share our opinions as parents, as community members. I know you guys have a tough road ahead with the facilities, and there will be critics, but I just want to applaud you guys for having the vision to incorporate community voice and being so organized with all the data and the information that you presented to us.
Thank you very much. All right, we will move on then to our workshops. We have three workshops this evening. The first is Facility Advisory Committee's Recommendation to the Board. This will be led by Dr. David Gunlock, Kim Neuan, Will Deppes, Bill Foster, Clint Sell, and Jim Fox. We can probably pull up additional chairs as needed.
Yeah. We have an extra one here. There's one right here, Dave. There's... Oh. Thank you. It's on there. He's warm? I don't know. I don't know if he's going to be warm. Yeah. No. And it looks like Mrs. Schnorr is joining us too. Very good. She's back.
It's a pleasure to be here and present the culmination of six different meetings' worth of work. Actually, Julia probably said it way better than I can, so I probably won't embellish much of what she said, other than it was a very diverse group, and it was a tremendous experience. Our objective this evening is to provide you with information from that, from the Facility Advisory Committee. In a sense, this information has been distilled down into an executive summary document, and our workshop will reflect the contents of that document. It is, of course, posted on our district website. We have a Facilities Advisory Committee webpage dedicated to this exact... dedicated to this, and it includes YouTube videos of all the meetings, in case anybody wants to watch the several hours' worth of footage on the discussions. It is quite riveting. I think what might be a good idea is just, since there's a lot of people around the table, is just to have all of us quickly introduce ourselves, so you know, you know, who is who around the table. You know, I'm obviously Dave Gunlock. I'm the Deputy Superintendent of the School District.
Clint Sully with Bray Architects. I'd also just like to point out Joe Schrader led the discussion, so credit to him for his great work in facilitating the process.
Yes.
And I'm Bill Foster, and with School Perceptions, we're the company that administrated the community survey.
I'm Kim Neuan. I'm a parent of a school district.
Will Deppes, parent of three soon to be four in the district.
No.
And Sue Schnorr and Jim Fox are back here as well. Yeah, I'm glad you brought up the fact that Joe Schrader was the facilitator of this meeting. The administrative team was really there in an information providing capacity, so we participated in that, in that mode. The meeting format was over six sessions. The charge from the committee, and you've heard me say this as I've given you FAC updates, is proposed options, renovations, upgrades that support learning environments that are safe, accessible, efficient, and equitable, purposeful spaces that inspire innovative learning, accommodate evolving technology, and promote collaboration among students, staff, parents, and our community, a solution that maximizes use, reuse, and/or replacement of existing facilities, is cost-effective for the taxpayer, and provides an enduring end product that is energy-efficient and adaptable for decades to come, because, as you know, in Oshkosh, we use our facilities for decades and decades and a few more decades.
Centuries.
In a case, yeah. Sometimes we break the century mark. The foundation for this work, and the foundation was originally provided to us by the board, was the idea of a three-to-four-track elementary and eight-to-10-track. Now, we have done a lot of communication updates, and Bill will talk about the survey results, but one of the things we gathered right away was that the staff really would like more information, so we've been doing a lot of facility updates. Well, some of those core questions are, what is three-and-four-track? What is eight-and-10-track? It's three-to-four of each grade level at an elementary school, and roughly eight-to-10 sections per level at the middle school. But what does that really mean? It means an elementary school somewhere in the 450 to 600-student range. It also means a middle school capped at around 850, so somewhere in the 700 to 850-range. Those are sl... Those are slightly larger than our current facilities. The next question that often gets asked is, "Why that?" You know, we have quite a few smaller schools at this point in time. Why would we want to go to slightly larger schools? And isn't that counterintuitive? The answer to this is rooted in the next several slides. In a sense, both of these slides are similar. It provides flexibility for student placement and the ability to balance class sizes. It gets very difficult to balance class sizes when you have small elementaries that may have two of each grade level, or in some cases, one, as we've had in the district in the past. Music, art, FIAD specialists are available for the full school day. I happen to have spent time as a principal of a relatively small elementary school. The amount of staffing that was there to support my students was a fraction of what was in some of the larger schools, because they had what we would call economies of scale, and it allowed the balancing of staff a little bit better. Comprehensive academic services that allow for an inclusionary model for students. We want students to be able to attend their home school, and sometimes that is not necessarily possible when we have small schools where certain services are unable to be provided. Increased support for behavioral, mental health, and instructional technology. Once again, these supports, when you spread them across many small sites, dilutes the support, and that is one of the issues. So, in short, what this is really about is it's providing more resources in term, and in education, resources means teachers. More teachers per student than we are able to provide right now when we have to spread staff across so many small sites. So, that's one of the core reasons why the three-to-four-track model seemed to be the sweet spot. Not too small, not too large, just about right. It also allows teachers to collaborate and co-plan with grade-level teacher teams and supports our equity efforts. Because the larger the footprint of the school, the more it represents the community. The smaller the footprint, it may represent a microcosm of the community, but it does not necessarily represent Oshkosh as a whole. The next slide is very similar to the previous one that talks about eight-to-ten-track schools. The big difference here is the fact that at the middle-school level, there are certain times where we cannot offer certain courses because of the fact that they are so small. And this would allow us to have enough students to be able to offer some courses and some opportunities that we're frankly unable to offer today. In addition to the other benefits of having staff not be spread among so many small sites. So, this is the meeting schedule. The meeting started on September 9th, they ended on November 11th. It was incredibly compressed. I think Joe Schrader did an absolute phenomenal job, and I think the committee, they all did their homework, as Julia had mentioned, and they came prepared at each meeting, and there were some very robust discussions. But to keep this moving, so that we're able to sit here at this moment and present this information to you, was frankly no small feat. And I was a little dubious of the possibility of being able to complete, we all were, a little dubious of the possibility of being able to get all of this done and have a actual recommendation out there. Because it wasn't just the committee doing the work. We were in parallel, and we'll talk about this in a little bit, is the idea of doing a community survey. And incorporating that in the recommendations and giving the committee the information from the survey with enough time to be able to process it and ultimately provide the recommendations to you here today. So, kudos to everyone for staying on task. You'll hear some discussion about pathway option B. Now, many of you have seen this already. And in a sense, what this does is, we currently have 20 school sites. If we were to realize all of pathway option B, and there were several options that were looked at, it would most likely take us from 20 school sites potentially down to 14. So, we've laid it out here, how this all balances out on the west side and the north side of the school district. And if you'll look here in this slide, this is our current existing district. As you can see, we have 13 elementary schools, five middle schools, and two high schools. Ultimately, if this consolidation and rightsizing of the school district were to transpire, we would end up with roughly nine elementary schools, which is about what other school districts of our size have, three middle schools, and we still would, of course, have West and North High Schools. So, that is the overview. Now, there are multiple ways that we can get here, and one of the things about, that we knew, is that it took Oshkosh decades, a century, to get into this place. It would be unreasonable to think that we are going to modernize all of our sites in 2019. That wouldn't necessarily be fair, because it would impact one set of taxpayers right around 2019. So, this was always viewed as a multi-phased approach. And each phase would probably require some sort of referendum support, and each phase would also probably have to stand on its own for a given time, because you can't necessarily do all this at once. So, that's why we all talked about having multiple phases that would be somewhat interlocking. And the first phase was relatively clear. As you'll see here in this slide, this shows pathway option B with some school sites. This was one example where we were looking at building a new Merrill Middle School, absorbing Merrill Middle and Webster Middle students into that new middle school, that would take us down one middle school, and then having a new Webster Elementary School. There are multiple ways that we could do this. We could close a school like Merrill Elementary and Washington Elementary, and obviously, Webster would be incorporated into the new school. But there's also a pathway there where it would possibly allow us to close Merrill and Webster and leave Washington open. As I said, these are decisions that would probably be more wise to make them after you knew you had the support to make some of these decisions. So, the other thing we tried to communicate to the staff and the community is, there are multiple ways to do this. In Phase Two, the idea of potentially closing a middle school on the west side, we have a couple of options there. You could close a Tipler Middle School and build on, build a new South Park, or vice-versa. Once again, you're going to hear about some recommendations from the committee of how we would make those decisions. But that would sort of be Phase Two. Some people have asked, "Can you lay the whole thing out from start to finish?" We can, but it's not super accurate, because you kind of have to do Phase One, stand on it for a little while, and see how the district has changed as a result of it, and then move into a Phase Two, and then move into an, ultimately, a Phase Three and potentially a Phase Four. So, we try, you know, I always use the analogy of a hurricane forecast. You know, it's pretty darn accurate within the next 24 hours, but you get three, four days out, there's sort of this cone of possibilities. And that's very, going to be very similar for a lot of our facility work here in the Oshkosh area of the school district.
We have to work on a different metaphor for that, but it's a good one.
You don't like hurricanes? Well, I figured, there's no way a hurricane's getting this far north, so we're safe.
I suppose some of us have close-
In Florida, I pull up my-
... parking zone.
Yeah.
And with a Sharpie, I could make it come up this way.
That was not part of the script. Thank you very much. So, the Phase One projects that we ultimately settled on was the idea of safety and security updates to district facilities. And this involves relocating some office areas that are closer to the entrance. And in many cases, these are, in a sense, just swapping spaces. You know, we have some classroom spaces that are near entrances, they would be re-engineered or remodeled into office spaces, and then the office spaces that are at the core of the building would be remodeled back into classroom spaces. There were a lot of scenarios where it was just a swap. There were very few scenarios where it was a direct add-on. And that was in an attempt to do this in the most economical fashion that we could. Immediate building infrastructure and maintenance. Most of that was electrical systems at West and North. Those systems are outdated, the transformers need to be replaced, and that is to the tune of approximately, I believe, $9 million. You know, and that, but that's something that we absolutely have to do, and obviously, that's not something that, given the fact that revenue limits were put in place in 1993 that handcuffed all of you, that makes that very difficult to take care of some of those big-ticket items. So, that's another piece to it. The third part was building the new middle school that I mentioned, and that would be Merrill Middle School. And that would be, in a sense, taking Webster and Merrill and putting it into one facility. The fourth part was building an elementary school or updating and expanding existing elementary schools. That was the idea of building a new Webster Elementary on-site. And then making some decisions as to which elementaries would be absorbed into that brand-new school on such a beautiful piece of property. So, those were the four projects. We were sort of working on that while we were working on the survey. And so, the survey piece was then done midstream, so I will turn it over to you in one moment. I'll just switch the presentation. And we'll go through the actual survey results, so the whole community can see it. Obviously, this information was provided to the FAC, and they were able to absorb that into their recommendation.
So, I'll go through this pretty quickly. Again, it's on the website, but just to make sure everyone understands kind of what it says. So, again, it's School Perceptions, we're the company that conducted. We have done a lot of these projects, so to the extent that I can provide an editorial, I'd be happy to. The survey went out in November, we had 4,655 respondents, 1,830 came back in paper, which gives us a statistical margin of error, plus or minus 1.5 percent. So, if we were to get another 1,000 people to take the survey, it might go down to 1.3%. So, we've got really good data, we've got plenty of data, have a high level of confidence in the results. So, who took our survey? The first question we asked had to do with age. I always go to the far right to make sure that our seniors are well-represented in the data, which they are. But when it comes to voting, seniors actually are well-represented. In fact, we're a little overrepresented, and our young folks tend not to take surveys, they're not to vote. So, we're good with this. We had one question, "If you live in the district..." So, 93% of our sample, in fact, live in the district, with 6.7% that don't, which raises the question, "Who are these people taking our survey that don't live in our district?" The answer primarily is staff.
Yeah.
And so, if a staff member works here, we did want their input, it's very important. And there might be some parents who choose to open a role into the district. We will remove that 6.7% from the funding support questions, because they're not Oshkosh voters. So, that's the reason we asked that question. We have one question on, "In which municipality do you reside, city or township?" We checked this one, we think this is pretty representative of the community. We had 828 employees take the survey, or 18% of our sample, 1,803 parents. And if they are parents, we did ask the question, because it may be relevant exactly what schools their children attend, this does add up to more than 100%, because you can have-
Multiple kids.
-multiple kids. So, that's that. We had one question on communication, "Would you like to receive information?" Here, we thought it made sense to take the staff out completely, because we've got our own internal ways to communicate with staff. We then broke it into parents, they're in blue. So, parents like emails, 85%. And then it drops down to, there's five items that are in the kind of 37% to 42% in terms of website, text messaging, they access the Infinite Campus Portal. And then it drops down, for our non-parents, their number one is the Oshkosh Herald. So, way to go, Oshkosh Herald, wherever you are.
Right behind you.
Right behind you. So, 2/3, so almost 2/3 of our non-parent, non-staff respondents read the Herald, and the Northwestern is about 1/3. District mailings are at about 50%, like the district mailings for that group.
It's going so low.
Well, you can look at the room, and they don't come. They watch it, though. So, in the, so when we created this report, everything that was in the survey, we put it into the report. So, when you, a month from now, you say, "What was in that survey?" Well, there was some information that kind of created the distinction between an operational and capital referendum, because that's important, because you have both really in play with this district. And then, as well as a little bit of background information, and the fact that you've got about $127 million of identified needs spread out through your 20 schools. We then asked the question, "Would you support the district exploring a capital referendum to update and/or build new schools?" Now, this is kind of important. We broke this in, this data into three mutually exclusive subgroups. The reason we did that is because our complete data set is overrepresented with staff and parents, so we have to remove any bias. We have to look at staff as a group, they're in red. So, they're there at 60%. Our parents in green are at 57%. And then our non-parent, non-staff, we call those the purple people. They are the most important group, because they represent the majority of our voters. You'll hear from staff, you'll hear from parents, really, literally, every day, but it's that other group that represents the majority of our community that get the most votes. They're very, very important. We have to look at what the green, I'm sorry, the purple people say. So, everybody's leaning towards saying, "Yes, let's explore a referendum," with, I guess, 52% of all residents, a majority saying, "Let's go ahead and explore it." One note here, and this is kind of a theme throughout the entire report, is there is a high level of not sure, need more information. So, typically, when we do a survey like this, we normally see about 10% of the folks. In Oshkosh, we're seeing, across the board, including staff, including parents, almost 30% saying, "I'm not sure." So, this is a, I don't know if it's a new concept, but there is an issue of needing more information before a decision will be made. That's important, subnote. So, the background information, again, we talked about the needs that exist throughout the entire district. And then, we talked about this idea of pursuing reconfiguration of existing schools, consolidating or rightsizing the district. And so, is that a concept that we should explore and pursue? And really, across the board, all groups are very, very similar, 50% of staff, 46% of parents, and 49% of non-parent, non-staff. So, better than two-to-one for all subgroups are saying, "Yeah, that's the direction we probably had." Again, with that subnote, that I've got a lot of questions. So, that's, again, a theme, and it's almost amazing how similar all three of those groups So, we talked, and Dave talked about the phased approach. We identified four projects, the first being safety and security at $11 million. We then asked a funding support question, we took out the non-residents. So, all residents were at 63% said, "Yes, I'd support that for $10, $10 tax impact for every $100,000 of home value." But we have to look at each group. Staff was at 72% saying yes. Parents are at 71% saying yes. And our non-parent, non-staff, those are our purple people, a majority of that group is saying, "Yes, I'd support that referendum." That's important. I suspect if we were to test this today, compared to Monday, it'd even be more support. So, this is an important issue across the board for all groups. Project Two was addressed the most pressing infrastructure and maintenance needs. Now, again, we had 127 million identified. This is only 10 million of the 127, so this is just a little bit, but it's something. So, this was 10 million, again, same format, 70% of all residents. Staff were in at 78%, parents at 77%, and our non-parent, non-staff, the purple people, again, all groups are in saying, "Yes, yes." Those two, first two parts are important. We then go to the new middle school. Same format, all residents were at 53%, staff were at 53%, parents were at 50%, with a large undecided group. But our non-parent, non-staff, the, most of the voters, they're at 36% yes, 44% no. This isn't terrible, but I think there's a lot of questions exactly how this would be done. It's, I guess terrible is not it. But we've got a, we've got a high percentage of undecided here.
Can you explain what, how do you interpret undecided?
Yeah, so typically, in our world, between survey and actual referendum, typically, we see undecided go about 1/3 yes, 2/3 no. So, if you were to pick up 6% of the undecided, or 7%, maybe 1/3 of that, you'd be up around 43% yes. So, you're not going to quite get there yet. So, that's, that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yep. And then, Project Four is the elementary piece of Phase One proposed. Again, same format, 47% of all residents, 56% of staff with 27% undecided, 55% of our parents like that idea, 25% undecided. And our non-parent, non-staff, they're split, 39, 39. So, then we wrap that all into one project. If we put it all together and came in at 107.4 million, we tested that as a, because ultimately, that would be the referendum question, 47% support, staff were at 55%, parents were at 57%, a little bit better than staff, and our non-parent, non-staff were at 37%. So, we're not quite there on the whole package yet. So, what did we learn from the survey that we did? Well, we knew that a majority of all subgroups would support a referendum that provides funding to improve safety and security and address the most pressing building infrastructure. That was clear from the data. And a majority of all subgroups encouraged the district to pursue reconfiguration of existing schools or rightsizing this district, as opposed to trying to maintain everything. So, in- So it's kind of a philosophical, do we turn left and try to rightsize? Or do you turn right and try to maintain everything? I think we need to turn left. I think that's kind of what we learned from the survey. Although people have questions exactly how that would work. And there's a high percentage of respondents, especially staff and parents, that are undecided. I kind of use the metaphor of not the hurricane, but I use the pond, so it's a smaller piece of water.
I like yours better.
Okay. So if you drop a pebble in the pond, really, the first group that it goes out and hits are the staff. They're here every day, they're using it, they're really important, and they communicate. They have communicated, they talk to their friends, neighbors, and parents. They need to kind of be on board with what's being proposed. Second wave that goes out would be the parents. And then the third wave would be our non-parent, non-staff. So as we're hurricaning, we can start with our pebble. And so that's kind of, I guess, the takeaway is there's support to move towards this rightsizing concept, but there's a lot of questions in terms of exactly how it works. So that was kind of the data we collected to inform this group on exactly what to do, so I'll turn it over.
Can you maybe just share from board, in case they don't know how many of these you've done, and kind of how the accuracy has been on your surveys compared to referendum passes?
Sure, so we've done, we've conducted over six hundred community surveys for the sake of referendums. I guess we've worked with the districts to your south, west, and north, but we haven't done your east, because you don't have an east. But we've worked with probably eighty percent of the school districts in the state. The data does end up being very, very predictive. So even if you might not like it, you kind of have to trust the data. And in, so in the last referendum cycle, we've done ninety-six projects, and the survey successfully predicted about ninety-two of the ninety-six. So it's very, very predictive data. And I can, we could talk about the four that weren't predictive. There are some things that happened between survey and final referendum, but you kind of have to trust it. It's very predictive data.
So that was the information that was provided to the advisory committee, and they had already started down the road of creating a recommendation for you. And this allowed them to modify and take a look at their recommendation. Clint, is there anything we missed prior to having the committee give their recommendations?
I don't think so.
Okay. So I guess at this point, we'll turn it over to some of our committee members, who will go through the actual recommendations. So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Yeah, I think ultimately, the group got to the spot that, you know, the consolidation in reducing the total number of sites in the district makes the most sense. You know, as indicated, you know, I can't remember what all the different pathways looked like, but, you know, the one we ended up settling on that seemed to make the most sense was the pathway B, where we ultimately get down to three middle schools, nine elementary schools in the district, and of course, keep the two high schools. And then as a part of that, you know, we recognized we'd be a part of, you know, this first phase, and then, you know, not knowing how long this is going to take. I mean, it might be a twenty, thirty-year process, start to finish, to kind of do all the master site planning for the entire district, and go through this entire process to bite off all those different sites and what needs to happen with them. So, you know, also looking at having future groups like us, whenever the next phase comes up or leading up into that next one. We thought that would make sense as well, just so that we have a good sampling of what the community is at that point in time, whenever the next phase comes up. And then, you know, we felt, you know, it made sense, from a referendum perspective in spring, to pursue the first two that were indicated in Bill's report. You know, there was pretty strong support there from both, so we thought, you know, there's a high likelihood that those would pass, especially given, you know, the statistical info that Bill just shared with us. There was some discussion on, you know, it may make some sense to look at a second additional round of, you know, some of the capital projects that maybe aren't at the critical stage. That there may, you know, given how strong the support was, it may make sense for the board to consider maybe some of the next level items for consideration in that referendum as well. I think some of the discussion we had on that, though, was we probably would want to make sure that those additional projects would not be at schools that you would look to ultimately close at a later date. Because I think that would get to be kind of hard to go to the community with, we just ask you for money, and then we're going to take the building down. So being cognizant of that, which I think is where the master site planning comes in handy for the district. And then based on the level of undecided and wanting more information, it was pretty clear that, you know, certainly staff and parents at a minimum, but the community at large just needs to better understand kind of what the plan for the district's going to look like. I think because that was rolling out by this group, and then also from the survey, kind of at the same time, you know, I think there was enough questions from staff, parents, and the community at large that more work needs to be done there. It didn't seem like we were that far away from being able to get to where we need to be to get people to say yes, but it may, it feels like it's a little bit unrealistic to get that by April. So, you know, that's maybe at a subsequent referendum timeframe. But, you know, the two big projects, you know, it's bigger dollars. I think there's just going to need to be some more education in the community and the rationale for why, to be able to get the necessary support there.
And if I could add, that my personal experience in the committee was that there was sticker shock, sticker price shock. Because we also discussed the cost of the Oklaun building, and how much less expensive it was in comparison. So I guess some of it was related to the recession at the time, which lowered the cost, but also just the passage of years. And so just from my perspective, having, even though I received all the information that we processed that had been digested before, and even with my knowledge, it still seemed very expensive. So I can imagine that parents would also be surprised by this, and non-parents, non-staff would be even more surprised. So the, it really would be important to do an outreach effort to try to explain some of these numbers and some of the ways that we came at them.
So I think that kind of takes care of nineteen. On the next page here, you know, some of the things we put together, and I think we got this, maybe it was from your group, Clint, you know, to kind of help guide us, you know, for us, but also just for future groups like we have of, you know, so say, long-term, the right site for a school isn't one that's in the site that you own. You know, as a district, you know, what are some of the things that can help guide you? Whether it's looking at a new site, or, you know, trying to decide between two different sites, you know, as to one to close, one to rebuild on. Try to have something for a group like us in the future to kind of be able to use as, maybe like a scorecard or something like that, to just kind of help guide, you know, what some of the considerations should be when considering a different site. And then on the final recommendations here, you know, I think we had some of this in the survey that went out, but, you know, just the context of, you know, if you're considering this, here's the impact to you as a taxpayer. And I think throughout the process, some of that got put together, but we thought that was just something that was needed. And then something that came up along the way as well was make sure that whatever the ask is, dollar amount wise, it's inclusive for the entire project. So it's not, hey, we built you this great school, except we don't have any money for playground equipment, or whatever, you know, maybe hasn't gotten taken care of in the past. It needs to be kind of a full package. You know, when you're asking for a big number, you know, get the whole thing, not come back and ask for a little bit extra afterwards in some other way. That was just a pet peeve of a few of the members.
Yes.
Could I just touch on point two? I just kind of want to talk a little bit about this, and Sue can elaborate if I don't do this justice, but timing also kind of plays, weighs heavily on, I think, the process that we move forward. The district has two upcoming operating referenda in 2021 and 2023. So there was even discussion within the committee, you know, do we look to combine those so that as we continue this process, there isn't this sense of referendum fatigue that we keep coming back to the community so many times and so often? And that sort of also then impacts how and when we can choose to address facility needs in the future. So that was kind of one thing that was discussed as well, so.
So that is the recommendations from the group. I can tell you that this was also in alignment with a lot of the questions I've been getting from staff members over the past three to four weeks, as we've done the facility updates. It is not surprising that they too wanted more information. I think if we had surveyed staff today, we probably would get a little bit different results from the staff, because we've been gathering their questions, and then we've been answering them each week. And so we've sort of cleared out the more general questions, and now we're able to some very detailed, specific questions on the part of staff members. They seem to have really received those updates really, really well. And the suggestion from our staff, you can take it for what it's worth, is very much in line with the committee's recommendation, and that we should be translating these same communication efforts that we're doing with staff members to the community as a whole. So in short, we've shared, as you saw on the slides, here's what everything would look like all the way to the end potentially, sharing that with community members, with the dollar values attached, the graphs, et cetera, et cetera. Proceed in the same fashion, so. With that, I guess we would open it up for questions from the board.
Who wants to go first?
If Oshkosh shouldn't have a referendum to it, would this look any different?
Interesting, that was one of the questions the staff asked in the last update, was is the river a hard boundary? And we did talk about filling the river in at one point, but we figured that wasn't really feasible. So we have also, the committee has talked about the river not being a hard boundary, and being open to the fact that we could cross that. I can speak from my own experience as a parent, back the last time we began to toy with the rivers as a boundary. I think the issues really happened when you broke elementary schools apart. I think that's when people got upset. I think if you took an elementary school boundary and moved it kind of at the same way, I think you were in safer territory. Intact, yes. Similar to honestly, what had happened when we moved Smith into Jefferson. That was, that kept the community together, as opposed to splitting Smith into three different schools. That's just my personal feedback, though.
The other question we had was, was I-41 a boundary as well? Probably to some people, that maybe is as well.
I think one other thing that came out too was, you know, going through this process, I think we also have to look at redoing the boundaries. You know, that's the time to do it. When you do some change to the physical structure of your campuses, that's a time where redraw the boundaries. I mean, it's a perfect time to do that.
Yep. And if you'll remember, when we built Oklaun, we redrew the boundaries as a result. We made Oklaun larger, and it filled up even beyond what we had taught, so.
And when you look at those potential opportunities as well, that's when you start blurring the river, forty-one, those kind of things. They start, they start to become nonissues at that point. And also, please understand with what was proposed, you know, what is up there in a draft proposal state with schools and those kind of things? That, those are things, those are the general ideas. So those are some of the things that can definitely be shifted. But you're probably saying, well, why is there more on one side versus the other side? Well, it's dependent upon where your population lives.
Right, yeah.
So I think that's an important point for the general community to be aware of, is that it's not that we're saying this is a boundary being drawn by a river or, you know, a road. It's more of where are our students residing, and where are the developments occurring, and those kind of things.
This question of city expansion has come up many times. And I live on the east side, but there are limited opportunities to expand on the east side. We have Lake Winnebago, and we can't go any farther east. To the north, we have the landfill, we have the community park, Winnebago Honey Court, and we have a prison. So we're very limited on the north side as to where we can expand. There just isn't the potential that we have to the west and the south. And so looking more long-range, which boards don't always have the wherewithal to do, I think that's very important, to look at where potential future growth will be in the community. When Oklaun was, when the referendum for Oklaun was approved, those apartments were not in the location that they are now. Many of us remember that area in the Pick and Save parking lot. Well, some people remember that as the old fairgrounds, and they had auto races there at one time, which is why it's called Fair Acres. And so, but when that Oklaun referendum passed, that was the area where there would be a circus that would come to town every year, and they would pound steaks into the blacktop and put their tents up. And then when the referendum passed, I don't know what happened at the circus, but I do know. The building construction went on there, so we had a residential area that we didn't have when that was passed. So it is a case of if you build it, they will come.
That also happened with Lakeside. We put the addition on Lakeside, and within a year, I think not even there, there is a huge apartment complex that came right up on a corner of Ripple in Oregon. Was, I don't even know how many units. And then Lakeside filled up real quick. So that is, that is really important, that when we start building these schools, it's amazing how the community starts building up real close to them.
So I was just going to ask either Dave or Vicki to explain for the greater good how we actually, as taxpayers, pay for our neighboring schools when they go to referendum and build schools for the greater good.
Or Sue?
I've heard it, but I think it's important.
Do you want to take this one?
I think you have to also be careful when you say that, because every district's aid is differently.
Right.
But it is true that in an Oshkosh situation, because we are a low spender, and we have low property wealth, we get about fifty percent state aid. So every time, like if we were to pass a referendum and borrow more money, we would get state aid on that money. And so if another district passes a referendum, and they borrow more money, unless they're not a high-aided district, they get more state aid. And because the pot is a definite pot, they don't, the state doesn't put more money in the pot because this district passed a referendum, that means other districts all over the state get less because one district gets more.
So like when we built a new school in Manasha, which we were about sixty percent aided at that time, citizens from Oshkosh paid with the rest of the state for sixty percent of that cost. And that, in a sense, limited the amount of state aid available for those who weren't passing referendum, which at that time was us in Oshkosh.
So I want to put it in very, very clear language. In essence, if you are a low-spending district and you receive additional aid from the state, what ends up happening is when you go to referendum, you have a capital project, districts from across the entire state are paying for your new facility. Am I stating that accurately?
So as taxpayers in Oshkosh, we paid, as state citizens, we paid for other school districts' new facilities. At the same time, we were giving them a pass on modernizing our own. With the exception of Oklaun, of course.
School facilities in Oshkosh have always been a big interest of mine. My family moved back to the Oshkosh area in time for my sister and brother to attend Roosevelt, which was then a middle school. And then my sister attended Tipler for one year as a middle schooler, when my brother went to West High. Tipler, I know, was built at a time when the district was, as in all times, we tried to be excellent stewards of the dollars we have to spend. So the Tipler building, it is my understanding, built with lower ceilings and more pitch to their stairwells, within code. But that was a way of reducing costs at that time. And the West building, my understanding is, when that was first proposed, it was actually going to be placed in a couple of blocks, because that was all level land out there. People thought that was too far outside the city. So my understanding is it was actually moved in a block or two, so it wasn't perceived as being too far out there. When I first came to the district as a central office staff member, Dr. Jim Henderson was superintendent, and one of the things they had to do at Webster superintendent, and one of the things they had to do at Webster Middle School, Webster Site, where George Poba had served as principal, was to place plastic and attach it to the ceiling at an angle so that the water that they knew inevitably would come in over vacation periods would go into buckets. And he made it a point to upgrade the roofs in the facility so that students and staff didn't have that, that issue. So the whole issue of facilities being good stewards and yet not being able to take care of facilities or maintenance issues has probably cost us additional dollars in the long run. Just as in our homes, if we let a roof leak go too long or some other issue, we're going to have to fix potentially more than what we started with. For those of us who like to sew, we learned that a stitch in time saves nine. So if you address issues early, you may not have to put in as much time or investment later. But the facilities, to me, are so important for so many reasons, certainly not the least of which is the health and safety and the well-being of our students and staff. So steeply pitched stairwells, to me, are a concern. It's also a factor, I believe, in another topic this board has discussed this fall and which has been a topic of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards as well as the Association of School District Administrators and school, I'm trying to think of the name for OSA, Association of, I can't remember the name right now.
Wisconsin School Administrators.
Thank you. And that's staff retention because it's a working conditions issue. And we've all noted that when we build a new facility, you see more housing development come into the area. It's attractive to buy a new facility or a new car or whatever that is. There is no question, having reviewed the data that will be our next workshop on district and school report cards, that we have some extraordinarily hardworking staff members constantly working to upgrade the quality of instruction and the learning of our students. And to have that limited by the facilities in which they work is not, not the best. We know we've lost staff, for example, who travel between buildings in this district but can get a job in another district where they do not have to travel. Because that travel time is very stressful on those staff members who have to do that. Twice in my career, I've job shadowed individuals who have to do that. And finding time to eat lunch, finding time to go to the bathroom, finding time to collaborate with other staff members when you're between two buildings is a problem. It's a problem for our ESOL program, our second language learners, because they don't have the availability of that specialized staff member to them because they're in the other building. They're not there that day. I just think we need to do something as a board. We need to take a long-term view of our facilities. I'm not throwing any other prior board under the bus. I don't know what conditions they worked under, but the time is now. And I believe those staff members, those former boards did an excellent job also of being good stewards of the dollars and the conditions under which they worked. But I really think the time is now for us. And we've already initiated it with this FAC to make sure that we are addressing the needs moving forward. I recently had some opportunity to look at what are the needs of the, the students who will graduate in the year 2032, which would be the graduation date for our current kindergarteners. And what I found was there was a lot of emphasis on soft skills, there was a lot of emphasis on technology, and there was a good deal of emphasis on content. As well as the ability to, what Elvin Toffler, a futurist, wrote some years ago, the ability to learn, unlearn, and relearn. And that the people of the 21st century who will be the illiterates are not those who can't read and write, it's those who cannot learn, unlearn, and relearn. Because our lives are changing so much with technology and with just so many things around us that we have to be able to instruct students in those ways. There was a national law passed in 1972. It was called Public Law 94.42, which established special education programs. Most of our buildings were built before 1972, which required facilities to work with our students with disabilities, whether those were intellectual or physical or whatever, and to provide spaces for school psychologists, which we know we need in this day and age, as well as counselors. Counseling programs were required by the state, but you didn't necessarily have to have a special room for those. So there are so many things that have taken place since 1972, which isn't that long ago for those of us who are, were born before 1972. But, so, thank you. Some of us were.
I was around.
I was around.
Perfect, perfect. But we, we have facilities that were designed for what we're asking them to do. And we see people making workspaces, places where they meet with children in areas that were never designed for instruction or never designed to provide mental health support and so on. And so we have to figure out as a board how we're going to use this data and move forward. Who else has questions? Mrs. Thompson, I think you have a whole list here.
I'll go quick. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Selagia. I can see your paperwork from over here.
Some of the concerns I'm hearing from the community is there is this fear of classroom sizes being doubled or tripled in size. When we go to, I think that there is more communication we can do, there's more education, you know, we can, we can help with the citizens, that we're not taking a two-track school and moving it into a two-track school and still keeping a two-track school. You know, we're making it a four-track school. So how does it impact this move going forward? Like what does this, how does that impact the classroom sizes? That seems to be a real concern out there.
Well, the irony is, is that if we keep smaller schools in place, it means larger class sizes for everyone. And, you know, this has taken a little while for us to talk about this. Let me give you a little, little example. Smith Elementary School was going to have one fifth grade this year. They did not have the numbers for two. They're going to have one. Jefferson was going to have one, not two. Together, we put them together, they have three sections of fifth grade.
Right. And so two bigger classes, they have three smaller.
Three smaller classes because we had more economies of scale to spread these out. Now, I've, I've had several layers of staff asking that exact same question. And then they said, well, wait a minute, what about a school the size of Traeger? That is a three to four-track school. Yet their sizes, some of their class sizes are high. I said, yes, they are. That's because in the overall staffing plan for all the 14, at that time, 14 elementary schools, we had to balance our staffing across a whole lot of small sites, which means we didn't have the FTE to give to a Traeger that was a three to four-track school the way we normally would. Because none of our schools are disconnected. While we may have some on the east side, the west side, the north side, and the south side, when we go to staff, it's one staffing plan for the elementary, one staffing plan for the secondary. So what impacts one school invariably impacts all of them. So by going with, not having to spread staff across so many small sites, it allows us to staff more effectively. It allows us to potentially, it'd much easier stay within our class size boundaries than we do now.
Right.
And in the Smith-Jefferson merger case, when those two were merged, we were able to spread the AGR contract to larger students. Okay? The same thing would essentially happen because Webster is an AGR school. If we brought in another school there, we would in a sense have more students covered by the same contract. Because you're, you're, you're limited in the number of contracts you have. You're not limited in the number of kids in a school that has the contract, if that makes sense.
Dave, if you wouldn't, Dr. Gunn, if you'll explain, please, for the general public, what is AGR?
AGR is the, oh boy, I even, what is it? Achievement Gap Reduction. I would have got it the first time. Okay. Achievement Gap Reduction, that used to be called Sage. What it is, is it's a grant program for school districts that allow us to, in most cases, reduce class sizes in grades K through three. Typically, we would cap them at the size of 18 in those. And we get, we get dollars to be able to do that. So they give us grant dollars to offset the cost of having those lower class sizes. Other than that, our class size caps are 24 students in grades K through three and 27 students, grades four and up. Is our, and that's a, that's a, that's a pretty, if you look at districts around us, we have some of the lower numbers. We're on the lower side of that.
Right. Could you also elaborate more? Some other things I've been hearing in the community is elaborate music and art, that they're saying, from my understanding, almost the opposite, that because if we go to the bigger schools, that our art teachers, our music teachers, our counselors, our nurses can stay in one spot, which you alluded to with traveling, and can help those students and be more involved with those students. Because they're all in one spot, they can do bigger projects. I've had music teachers and art teachers both contact me and talk to me that if they were at one school, they can do bigger projects, longer projects because they don't have to travel, they don't have, they have all the same kids then. So could you, I guess I just did it myself.
Thank you for answering your own question. That was awesome.
Yeah. So that's from, so that is true then. So they wouldn't have to, they could just stay in that one school and do, so it's actually...
Well, and Dr. Herzog hinted at that fact that if they're traveling all the time, we tend to lose staff very easily who are, because those are difficult working conditions. But we have similar situations with the grade level teams. If you're in a one or two-track school, you may be teaching second grade this year, next year you might be third grade, next year you might be down to first grade. So every year, you're bouncing grade levels and you can't get your footing necessarily. Our teachers do a wonderful job with it. But if all of a sudden you have a spot in a larger school where you're going to be that third grade teacher and you're not going to have to move every year, teachers tend to like that. That's, that's attractive.
Another question I had was, on phase one of the projects, there was talk about Merrill and I had people ask why Merrill. And what I'm telling them, and I'm hoping I'm correct, is because Merrill is the oldest middle school we have. It was built in 1900 and it has the most updates needed. It's, it's the most expensive middle school to, to update or to, and these updates are just, they're not even updates, they're just to get them where they need to be. They're not even, I don't even consider the $10 million to be an update.
I tend to describe it more as becoming ADA compliant, you know, so people don't think that you have a new facility by putting all this money into it. You don't. You're still going to have a Merrill that looks like Merrill.
Right. Yes, okay. So was that why Merrill was chosen by the committee for all these phases, for the plans, the projects, is because it was the oldest school and because it had, needed the most money?
It kind of, it was sort of a situation of a sweet spot and it kind of set off the start of the chain reaction for that consolidation or rightsizing of the district. We were able to tackle, again, a building that has, again, because it is, it is, as we looked at the 20 facilities, we really count Merrill as two because even though it's...
Elementary and middle.
Yeah, I mean, they're operating kind of independently of one another for the most part. So we had a building that had a lot of facility need. We had a building that's on a very, on a difficult site, given where it's located and how it's situated.
Right, yeah.
Again, given that it is two buildings.
So locked, yeah.
So that paralleled with, with the Merrill consideration and it just kind of became an ideal scenario to start the process of things.
Well, and there's significant capacity in the middle school facilities across the district.
Right.
And to your point, that's the oldest building that needs the most money poured into it just to get to a certain standard.
Right.
So all that kind of just led us to, that's the site to start with.
Okay.
Certainly on the middle school side.
And I guess the other part of it is that the site is large enough to accommodate building on the other end of it.
Right. Oh, simultaneously.
Right. So you build, you build a new school in the other part of the site and then ultimately raise it. So your question is exactly the question I had when, when we were meeting.
Okay.
And that's exactly the kind of question and answer that I think the public needs to have as well.
Needs to hear, yeah.
Because that whole reasoning of why Merrill, you know, or why this school, why not these others.
Right, okay. Okay. I just wanted to make a comment. Can I add a question? You said that you were sticker shock between, and you said about Oklawn. Were you talking about the Oklawn price of what it was to build Oklawn when we did versus what we need to build today? Or were you talking about that, like the price of how much a new school costs versus the maintenance of the schools?
It was just the price of construction of a new school.
Today?
Yes.
Versus what we did with Oklawn?
Right.
How different it is?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know that.
But even, sorry.
That's not just inflation, that's construction as a whole is now more expensive.
Right. When we built Oklawn, we, we were at the perfect time to build a school. And I remember us having that conversation. That was part of the reason why we put in the terrazzo floors. We could, we could really build it to last. At the time, we were looking at that because we were in the middle of the recession and costs were dropping quite a bit.
There's a couple of other factors. Again, the four-track costs that we were looking at, it is a bigger school, so I mean, the footprint of that is a larger facility, so that is, you know, another reason why it wasn't worth it.
Wish that would be important in the communication to the community.
Yeah.
It's not as, you know, it's not apples to apples.
Yeah, we wouldn't just be building in Oklawn, we'd be building in Oklawn plus, a much larger facility than in Oklawn.
Right, right.
And just to touch on it, because we didn't do this, again, another piece of the time and it goes to the cost overall as well, but again, interest rates remain very, very low and I think they actually just set another record within the last few weeks, if I'm not mistaken. They, we keep saying it's not going, the financial people saying it may not last, but again, in terms of the timing, we're at just this kind of perpetual low rate and so again, now's a good time to, to lock in on good rates for interest.
One last thing. I would just want to say thank you. And I know there's, there's so much out there and I really hope that the community and the citizens entertain, we really, really are trying as a board, and I will speak for the board, that we are trying to be very transparent with this. You know, if you have questions, we have the, you know, questions, you know, that you can call, watch them, watch all the meetings online. I know it's a lot of hours, but I just feel that people are making comments and saying things without having that information. So if you, you know, I want them to call, you know, just if you have these small questions or big questions or concerns, ask. Because obviously there's 30% of our community out there that doesn't feel like they have the information they need. So that would probably be, I would charge us, that that's our next thing we need to do is find them, get them the information, you know, let's get on board. And then also to the maintenance, there's a lot of talk out there that we haven't been maintaining these facilities and other boards past haven't been doing it. And I can sit here and say it's hard. It is really hard. And they are maintained. We have 120-year-old buildings out there, plus. They have been maintained or your kids wouldn't be in them today. So they have been maintained, but we also don't have the budget to maintain 120-year-old buildings. At some point, we need to, you can't keep doing this. It'll cost more than building new schools, which, which I'm sure the facility has all seen. So I just want to give credit to our maintenance, that they really are doing a good job. And that is hard to hear out there because the buildings are being maintained the best as we can. We want to keep the kids safe, but take a walk through them, they're old. Most of them are very old. So thank you guys and thanks for doing what, and for being on the committee. And I appreciate your hard work because I know that was a lot of hours and a lot of work. And I know when we decided as a board to make a committee or ask, you know, our executive team, hey, can you guys make this committee and see what the community, the community wants, we knew what we were asking was a lot. So we really appreciate the feedback.
We, we want to thank you for being so forward-looking to think about forming it and to put so much effort into doing it.
Well, maybe just one quick thing too, talking about the age of buildings, something we had a lot of discussion about was at some point it may make sense to just kind of have a cutoff line age-wise, you know, at some point moving forward that at this age...
Can we do under 20?
We're not reinvesting, you know, whatever that is, you know, kind of in your master site planning process for the district.
That's a good point.
Yes.
You know, have a cutoff point and then that's transparent to the community so you kind of know what's coming. You know, that the ask is coming because it's 80 years old and should we really stick a bunch of money back into an ancient building?
That's a great point.
You know, whatever the age is determined.
Right. That's a great point. That's, that'll make it easier too. Thank you.
Mrs. Selagia, I believe you've had some questions.
Yes, I do have a list of notes that I will try to sort out. So my first one is I did pay attention to the purple people and I noticed that actually for the elementary school, there is more support. The staff and the parents are in more support of building a new middle school, but the non-staff, non-parents are in more support of building a new elementary school. Does it have to be a middle school first before we do an elementary school or... Does it have to be a middle school first before we do an elementary school, or, I don't know if that's something you guys talked about? If we have people on board for an elementary school, can we push that one first?
I would say people, not the, the purple people are reacting to two variables. One is the thing, and the other thing is how much is it going to cost me? So I think they're probably reacting more to it's less expensive.
I can afford that, yeah.
As opposed to it's a solution I like better, so I wouldn't jump to that conclusion.
Oh, okay, thank you.
It's half the price.
Yeah, it was. So that was probably what was appealing. Okay, that makes sense. But still, to ask that question, is, in this phase one, is that the order that it needs to be a middle school first and then an elementary school?
I kind of wonder, what, what was the cost of the upgrades needed at Webster, for example?
Well, yeah, and I think part of the, again, part of the rationale for the middle school first is because it's, it's a bigger building. We were addressing housing of a greater number of students as sort of that first move again in resolving those two buildings. Moving the elementary kids, there are fewer of them, and we sort of felt like whether we sort of shifted the remaining kids to Webster or just redistributed them in, in the remaining north side buildings, we had a couple of different strategies on how we could do that. To build the, the elementary, we're still having to try to solve then the, the middle school problem, and it's probably not going to be as simple. So that original question of the middle school, did it have, have some dollar allotment to potentially convert Webster again, whether it was a temporary basis as an elementary school? If we would have run it back the other way, we probably would have had to recalculate then making Merrill or Webster the temporary total middle school, and, and again, it may, it may not have worked in that scenario. So it was, it was kind of about trying to address that, that bigger chunk of, of kids from those two schools first.
I, that makes perfect sense. I just, I don't know, wanted to have that be part of the discussion. Um, thank you. I'm going to check that one off and see where I should go next. Oh, so the other question while we're talking about Merrill, when you said that it would be built at the other end of the school, so when you look at the map, there's kind of two lots that aren't completely connected. Is that what we're referring to? Is building the new Merrill on?
Correct.
The other lot?
Yes.
It's all one lot that we all own, but yeah, I just took, I lived here a long time before I realized the school district owned that piece of property. So I just wanted to make sure other people knew that too. Um, let's see, what do I have left? That one already got talked about. I'm just curious to hear the consensus on pathway B. And if I, I did look at the slides, I watched one or two of the YouTube videos, but I mostly just looked at the slides. There were two other pathways, is that correct? There were like three options total?
Correct. I think part of it was, again, there was sort of developing the pathways and then developing the number of track strategy, whether it was the, most, again, mostly, I, I, as we went through this process, I really thought a lot of what we were doing was solving the middle school problem of the district, or not problem, but addressing the middle school issue more, more even than some of the elementary. The elementary kind of is, happens a little bit secondary to it. But the, the, the pathway B kind of was again, that right size of schools. And some of the other options we looked at, the middle schools were too small, and they were, they were falling on the, the small side of things. And, and in some cases, they were too big. So it was kind of, again, kind of finding that sweet spot of addressing that eight to ten track middle school solution is kind of what the big difference in those different pathways were.
And there was some discomfort going larger, coming from the size we are to something much bigger than that, you know? Just some concern that the community would get there from what we've been accustomed to, to making a big jump and consolidating further than what we need recommended. So we kind of talked all the way through that. And B is where we settled as kind of a happy medium in terms of what seemed to be a fit to accomplish some of what the district needed to take care of, as well as what would be realistic to get sold within the community.
And it's, I guess I was just wondering, excuse this metaphor, my husband's an attorney, so I'm thinking like a jury, but it sounds like you were all pretty convinced on B. It wasn't like.
Yeah, I don't know, if we weren't unanimous, we were off by one.
Okay.
You know, so it was highly in agreement of that path.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's kind of how I pictured that debate going, where you're trying to persuade everyone, right, to your side? Thank you for that. I think that might just about, oh, there was one thing. On pathway two, I did notice that the west side, the, would go down to five elementary schools. And am I understanding correctly that one of those elementary schools would then be split into the two middle schools? Because that's how the arrows look on the graph, but I don't know that that's actually the implication of what would happen.
Well, again, the elementary schools are not all the same size.
Yeah, some were six hundred, some were still three fifty.
Some was three-track, and some actually was a two-track, still remaining. And that, that was another reason why I think the group liked B is because it did offer some flexibility in how we eventually roll in what the current district has into that option. It allows flexibility that maybe some of the smaller schools could, could remain in function as, as two-track schools. So, 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 yeah.
Right.
The, the, how that actually splits up, we'd have to really take a look at where it falls on the map and, and, you know, developing the boundaries. It was just kind of more or less diagrammatic at this point.
And it could involve not only, you know, because these are going to be larger schools as well, but also there's probably going to be a corresponding boundary change, just like we did when we did Oaklawn. I mean, there's, there was a small boundary change.
Dr. Gunlock, just for clarification, currently.
Yes.
Do all of our elementary schools, one hundred percent of the population at a elementary school, all go to one middle school?
Yes.
Or do, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, thanks. Yeah, I just, whenever I look at that, I'd wonder about that W three elementary school, and then that's obviously further down the road. So I think, I just wanted to reiterate something that Dr. Herzog said. When she said that a lot of the spaces in our schools were not designed as classrooms. I've noticed on Bray's report, the elementary school that my students go at, the, I think it's the third addition. Their elementary school, I think, has had five, which seems like a lot. But the third one just says that it's a multipurpose space, and it's actually classrooms. So I just think that that's important, that we keep reiterating that, that we have students spending their full day in a classroom that was not designed to educate students. It was not designed as a classroom. It was designed as a multipurpose center. That we have used filing cabinets and different things to turn into classrooms. So that one wasn't a question, but I just wanted to get that out there, and I think everything on my sheet is covered for now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I had some questions as well. You, you kind of just alluded to this, but do all the plans involve redrawing boundaries? And the reason I'm asking is because I think it's been almost ten years since we closed Green Meadow. Has it been ten years? I don't.
Yeah, probably. Because it was closed before I came to the district, and I think you're ten.
And so we still have students that live in the Green Meadow area that are bused to Lakeside. And I think they actually changed buses at Traeger.
Yeah, a lot of them go right by Traeger.
Right by Traeger. And so that would be something that I would hope that this plan would kind of look at too as well.
Well, if you look in the plan, the Lakeside, Lakeside School really has not changed all that much in terms of its, its size. And we have talked about that potentially redrawing some of that boundary, adding some of those students to Traeger. And then, and then that allows us not to overload Lakeside and have, have as many involuntary transfers. Kind of a similar little situation is happening at Oaklawn. You know, those two both share the same issue, where we have more involuntary transfers from those two sites to other schools. Now, this, this year, we were able to add a, a section at Lakeside, and that helped alleviate the need for involuntary transfers. But that would be a, that would be certainly a logical thing to do.
Because those kids spend like forty-five minutes on the bus.
Yeah.
And they could be at Traeger in fifteen.
Yeah, we could potentially decrease the bus time for them and then have some capacity at Lakeside for any other growth that's occurring there.
I have a couple ones.
Go ahead.
So I also want to thank you guys for all the hours upon hours that you went to these meetings, and just thank you, thank you, thank you. What I like about what you guys presented tonight is it enables us to be proactive, not reactive. A polar vortex hits Smith and ruins the roof, and we have to close it. This is something I, I want us to be more proactive, and that's what you guys have done and put together. And I think that, you know, having this long-term plan, which is something that every school district has almost, is we're going to do this in ten years, fifteen years, twenty years. And I also like that you said, you know, buildings have a lifespan. They do not last forever. In places, it does not make sense, in places like Merrill, to continue to dump money into those buildings that are, are, are never going to be ADA compliant. And so that was my, my question. Would you guys be able to maybe organize a Merrill field trip? I've heard a lot of people saying that once they got in the building at Merrill and they saw the uneven balconies and, you know, how, it's just, it's never going to be ADA compliant. It would be impossible. I don't even, do they even have any students with wheelchairs there? Probably not.
I don't know.
Because you could not navigate that school.
Yeah.
Merrill Middle or Merrill Elementary?
Either one.
It's, you know.
There are students in wheelchairs at Merrill though.
And I'm sure it's probably very difficult for them to get around all the stairs. Right, mm-hmm, right.
But it does limit some of the spaces.
Right. So the feedback I've gotten is if we could organize a field trip or an open house where people could come see what it's like and, and what we're talking about, that that might be helpful. And then I had a question about our neighboring districts. So we know that Fondy passed a ninety-eight point five million referendum last year, and nine million separate for air conditioning. And Nina is going again, probably for a hundred million or more, is what they're thinking. And, you know, our, we, this isn't about keeping up with our neighbors. It's about competing with our neighbors. And, you know, when people get jobs in Oshkosh and they have a choice to live in Oshkosh or Fondy or Nina, we hear a lot that they choose to live in Nina because the schools are better. So my question to you is, do you think that these plans will enable us to attract more students to Oshkosh and more families to live here instead of our neighboring areas?
Well, we've been talking largely about budget logistics, fitting X number of kids in Y buildings, et cetera, et cetera. The one thing we haven't talked about is the idea of modernizing our facilities. You know, as Dr. Herzog said, preparing kids for twenty thirty-two now as our kindergartners, you know, and making flexible spaces in buildings, you know. Our, our maintenance teams have done a wonderful job stretching our facilities as long, well past what would be a normal usable life. But the one thing they can't build, maintain into our facilities is flexible spaces that allow us to modernize the educational process. So I think it definitely would allow us to compete better in terms of people selecting Oshkosh as the preferred destination to want to live in, work in, play.
Look what happened at Oaklawn. You build it, boom, it's full immediately. And all the economic development that's occurred around there, all the apartment projects that have gone up in the last five, six years from there that have brought more housing in, I mean, that just typically happens around new construction.
In Oaklawn's size, we intentionally built the boundary to be smaller than you normally would to have capacity, because we anticipated that. We aimed low. It actually well exceeded that, so.
And we also know that, to your point as well, Will, is that school systems and facilities oftentimes are economic drivers, and it's a significant economic driver for communities. So this is definitely well beyond just the conversation of a facility, as you might say, you know? Number one, what's in the best interest of our students, you know, our guiding principles, students first. And really to making decisions based on, on that and keeping that in our, in the forefront as we're making these decisions. So as you're hearing tonight, a lot of this is tied and related to what can we provide to, for our students. It's not about money. It's not about budget and, and, you know, those kind of things. This truly is about really doing what's in the best interest of our kids first. The second thing that also happens is, again, going back to your point, is by nature, it is an economic driver. It, and also, it helps us in so many other ways that we, we don't even realize at this point in time. When parents are making decisions as to where they want to live, oftentimes, the very first thing they're going to do is drive by a facility. Now, if a facility looks rundown or something, that may, it may have curb appeal as far as, you know, it may have good trees and, and, and those type of things. However, if the actual building itself looks extremely old, parents won't not, they won't necessarily, I'm not saying they won't, but they won't even necessarily go in to figure out what's happening inside the school. The incredible things, the incredible work that our teachers are doing on a regular basis. So to answer your question directly, yes, this is something that we definitely feel would be in the best interest of our students, number one. And number two, would be a significant economic driver to guarantee, to, to continue to contribute to our community and the growth of our community and the development of our community.
I know there's been some discussion about the proposed sizes, which was a cornerstone of this group in terms of looking at three and four-track, three, four-track elementary and, and eight to ten-track middle schools. I am not concerned about an eight to ten-track middle school from a, a size standpoint. I've worked in a large middle school of over thirteen hundred students with a staff of four elementary counselors, a full-time psychologist, two, two assistant principals, a principal, police, resource, a school resource officer. We collaborated regularly, and students do not have to fall through the cracks in a school of that size. It's, to me, it's all in the collaboration and the communication. We had, and I know we have in this district too, what we call care teams. We met regularly. And if a student was, had, had falling grades or there was some traumatic life experience, we, we discussed that student. And one of us at the table had a responsibility of finding out what was going on and reporting back. So there was constant reporting and accountability for what was going on. And we really worked hard to make sure that kids did not fall through the cracks. Were we a hundred percent spot-on? Probably not. But we really made an effort to get to know the name of every child in that school and make sure they were connected with a staff member. So the size of this proposal, while it's larger than Oshkosh, all you have to do is drive twenty minutes north to Nina and you'll find a larger middle school than what we are used to here. That community had two middle schools that were on the same side of the city. Just as we have the corridor on the east side, east of, of Bowen Street, where we have three elementaries, more or less in a, in a vertical line, and those would be Washington, Webster, and Emmeline Cook. Keeping in mind that the Webster building was designed initially as a junior high school, now has the name middle. So when you drive by there and you see that the word middle is a different color silver than the rest, it's because it, those letters replaced the words that spell junior high. So that, I don't remember when that conversion took place, but it became a K eight school instead of a middle school. There must have been a time when they needed more elementary school space, and so that, that's why they did that. But when you look at the sizes of those three elementary schools in, in pretty close proximity, they're not among our largest elementary schools. And those buildings do require a fair amount of, of investment at this time to bring them up to ADA and other compliance issues. So I know that an eight to ten track middle school can work. You have to have the right staff. We're willing to collaborate with each other and work together. But you also enjoy the economies of scale of having full-time specialists, as we've said before, behavioral intervention specialists, psychologists, music, art, and so on. So I, I think that's very doable. And the same thing, I, I don't have experience working full-time in a three to four-track elementary school because my background is secondary. But I know those can similarly work, and it can be very demanding on a teacher, as Dr. Gunlock pointed out. If you're the only teacher at your grade level, you don't have anybody else to collaborate with, and you're bouncing around and you, you just don't have those successes. Similarly, it's very hard on students. If you are in a third-grade classroom, and let's say you're a male student and your interests lie in the science area and everybody else wants to play baseball all the time, and you don't care about baseball, you don't fit in, and that's, that's problematic. And so there's no other third-grade classroom to go to. So if you can't relate to your peers in that elementary school, that's a problem from a social and emotional standpoint. And so when you're in a bigger school, you have a bigger pool of, of a peer group to draw from and find students with whom you have something in common. So it's, it's not only dollars. It's also for the social and emotional development of students. Does anyone else have anything to? Does anyone else have anything to comment on?
Well, I was just going to make a follow-up to that, is that, you know, I hear a lot of people say, oh, I went to this school, it's so fantastic, it looks exactly the same. And I always say, has teaching changed? Has the way we are learning changed? Technology has changed. Our schools need to change and we teach so much differently now than we did when these schools were built and they're not necessarily good learning environments anymore, you know? So I don't know, I just had to throw that out there.
I would say that it's probably hard for people who are not in education to understand what has changed in teaching, because I have the same reaction. I went back to my old school, I go, geez, they moved things around, I wish they'd left it alone. But without being involved in education, you don't understand that the way you were taught as a kid probably isn't as good as the way kids are taught now. So you might not understand that the facilities have to change too.
Right. And these facilities can't always accommodate new technologies and fab labs and all these other kinds of stuff that we're using now, so.
Anyone else? Mr. Preschel, you have anything to add to that?
Okay. I just wanted to note that I was in a recent meeting with some city leaders where it was noted that the average cost of a home in Oshkosh is, or value of a home in Oshkosh is a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, whereas in the city, or the, excuse me, the town of Elgoma, it's two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But if you take the cost of those components of what you had up on the screen, eight dollars and sixteen cents a month, that basically comes to about twenty-six cents a day. To me, that's a good investment. I know we have some referenda that will be ending soon. They had time limits or timeframes on them. I know that there were other districts who passed, I think they're called non-recurring referendums, so they don't have an ending date, they just continue. So it's maybe like your cable bill, you keep paying your cable bill year after year, month after, month after month, year after year. You don't, I mean, it's an expense and you have to watch, we have to all watch our expenditures, but it's not like it's a big bump up. So with a non-recurring referendum, it just continues until it would be voted out.
And just for clarification, we're talking about operational referendums for a non-recurring versus a capital referendum.
Thank you. And as far as referendum fatigue, that is a concern, it truly is. But I also think that the quality of education and the quality of what we would gain from roughly twenty-seven cents a day is a good investment in our children and in the economic development of our community. Because when, schools are a good indicator of not only how well we value our children and do we truly put them first, but it's also a lead into growth and expansion of economic activities in the community which benefit all of us and make our communities then better places for all of us to live, learn, work, and play by attracting new businesses, higher paying jobs, and all of those things. I see that is all related. Anyone else at this point? So next steps, we need to get this back on future agenda. We need to decide what we're going to do. And if we think we are going to move toward a referendum in April of 2020, we really need to get going very soon. So we'll have this back on the agenda in two weeks. And we need to give Dr. Cartwright and her staff further direction. I want to thank all of you and the rest of the committee who have put in so much time, energy, and effort into this. This is something we really need as a system and I'm just happy that we can do this for the benefit of everyone in this community. So thank you all for your time, energy, and efforts.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the second workshop, we have the district and school report card with Mrs. Conrad.
Good evening, I'm Julie Conrad, the Director of Curriculum and Assessment, and here to present our district and school report cards for the eighteen-nineteen school year. So as you saw last time, we, the school report cards are grounded and based in the Wisconsin State Assessment System and our school report cards were released on November twelfth. I feel like I'm anticlimactic today with the board workshop because we've already done quite a bit of communication on our school report cards.
Yeah.
As you know, our school report cards is a key progress indicator when it comes to our strategic plan and our five goals within our strategic plan. The school report cards and our district report card informs us on how we're doing on goal number one and also on goal number five, because it really does take our community in order to support our schools and our community expects us to report back on how we are doing. In a school report card, there are four priority areas that we look at and that are looked at by the state, so that's student achievement, growth, closing gaps, and being on track to post-secondary readiness. As you know from previous report cards, they started, the State of Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction started a weighting system. Because as you've seen in previous data that I presented to you, standardized assessments along with school report cards tend to follow the line of the higher your percent of students on free and reduced lunch, the more likely your, lower your scores are. And that's going across standardized assessments. And so the State of Wisconsin, instead of weighting everything equally, was trying to do value-added or add variable weighting to so, to like even the playing field and take a look at really when we put schools side by side, what, how can we be comparing apples to apples instead of apples to oranges? So that variable weighting helps to even the playing field. So for the Oshkosh area school district, our weighting looks like you can see up here on the screen. Growth for the Oshkosh area school district is more heavily weighted because we are a district at forty-two point two percent for the eighteen-nineteen school year for students that are economically disadvantaged. A school district or a school that has a lower percentage of economically disadvantaged students qualifying for free and reduced lunch, student achievement would be weighted higher. So closing gaps and on track to post-secondary readiness for all schools and all districts is held at twenty-five percent for those two categories. So the Oshkosh area school district, I'm proud to report meets expectations. This is just a smidge lower than we were last year and we missed exceeding expectations by point six, zero point six points. I was like, ugh, we were almost there. So key areas within our district report card that put, that are, that have us at that seventy-two point four score. And remember, those are points, not a percentage, those are points out of a hundred, not a percentage, but it's district growth and it's on track to post-ready, post-secondary readiness. District growth and growth overall is a strength in our district and we emphasize that with our teachers and with our students having that growth mindset and really focusing on when you're moving a student, they're going to meet that bar when you're moving them and you're meeting their needs within the classroom. So we meet expectations. So let's look at our trend as a school district, our district report card trend. You can see up here, we were at seventy-four last year, our score this year is seventy-two point four, but as you can see, we're, we basically have an upward trend as we go with our school report card scores. The school board asks, and our community asks, how do we compare to districts that are like us, districts that are within our athletic conference, and districts that are neighboring to us? So let's first take a look at districts that are like size. And to me, as we take a look at this, this is probably the best comparison because their demographics are going to be similar, they're going to have this, you know, essentially the same number of students, et cetera. And when we take a look at our comparables or like-sized districts, you can see here is where Oshkosh is. I want to point out though, as you take a look at that, look at the column furthest to the right and take a look at the district's percent economically disadvantaged students and where we are with like-sized districts. And so here is another look at this graphically and you can see where we are at compared to like-sized school districts. Sometimes it's easier to see it in chart and sometimes it's easier to see it on a graph. So now let's look at the Oshkosh area school district compared to our athletic conference school districts. And so you can see our school districts in the athletic conference and here is where Oshkosh is. Once again, I would like to point you to the furthest right-hand column and where we are with our percent of students that qualify for free and reduced lunch. And I'm going to show you a graph, a little, data a little bit later in the presentation that's going to emphasize this, this point here. What we're really trying to do is we're trying to bend the curve and we're trying to beat the odds with our students. And then here, this is within our region, this is school districts that are neighboring us, and here is where we are compared to our regional or neighboring districts when it comes to school report cards. We collaborate often with our CISA VI districts. CISA's are the regionals, regional areas within the State of Wisconsin. And the CISA VI area happens to be a very high-performing area in the State of Wisconsin, northeast Wisconsin does very well. And this is where Oshkosh is when we look at all of our CISA VI districts when it comes to school report cards. We collaborate with our CISA VI districts quite often and so it's often asked, well, what, you know, what are the districts in CISA VI doing that are further to the right or scoring higher than the Oshkosh area school district? I can tell you, as Dr. Kim Brown and myself work with our regional curriculum and instruction directors, we are using similar methods, strategies, and curriculum because we are all collaborating together and learning from each other on what works best for our students. So here is one of the graphs that I'd like to take a look at, and you've seen this the last few times that I've reported out on school and district report cards. But if we take the thirty-three largest school districts in the state, and Oshkosh happens to be the eleventh largest school district, and you plot them on a graph with the percent economically disadvantaged compared to the overall accountability score, and you plot them and you put in a regression line, you can tell right away what is the relationship between the percent economically disadvantaged and their accountability score. It's a direct relation, it's a direct relationship. And there is Oshkosh. So where we want to be is we want to be to the right of that line and that's where we are. And we are trying to beat the odds, we are trying to make sure that kids have what they need so that we are closing the gap so that they can be competitive and perform, outperform their peers in other parts of the state and in the nation. We want to make sure that they're competitive. So if we take a look at that, does that hold true, that trend, for the State of Wisconsin? So we took all four hundred and twenty-six.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one? Okay. Four hundred, there's been consolidation, right? Four hundred and twenty-one school districts in the State of Wisconsin and plotted them out and you can see once again that trend is the same. And here is where Oshkosh is with their accountability score. And we often ask, because we take a look at this, we want to learn from other school districts. So we want to say, who's, who's up top there and who's off to the right? And so we had, those are, just like in the past, those are very small school districts and one is Lactaflambeau, I want to say, I can't remember the other one, Pine River, et cetera, but they're very small elementary districts. So we really want to be looking at, and it's a better comparison to look at school districts of similar size and similar demographics when we're taking a look at what's going to work for, for our community and our schools. So I'm going to pause for just a second. Do you have any questions about our district school report card? All right, well then, I'm going to move on into our ratings. So for high schools, we are very proud of our Oshkosh area school district high schools. Oshkosh West exceeds expectations and they are up a category and North High School meets expectations. And across the state, high schools were very worried about what their report cards were going to look like this school year because for the first time, all assessment scores, it's not just the ACT with eleventh graders, it is ACT Spire at grade nine, grade ten, and the grade eleven ACT that are counted on the school report card over the past three years, because you have to have multiple data points in order to get a growth score. So this is the first time our high schools have growth scores. They had closing the gap scores before, but they have growth scores. And for Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West, our ninth and our tenth graders, as you, if you remember from last month's board report when it came to assessment and accountability on the ACT Spire, our ninth and tenth graders were, outperformed the state average and did very well this year. They have done a lot of growing and that really helped both West and North when it came to their report card ratings, especially West High School. As we take a look at our middle schools, all of, we have Merrill, Webster meet expectations. Tipler exceeds, Trager and ALPS significantly exceed, South Park just missed meeting expectations, so they are down a category. And South Park is our only school in the district that was at that rating. Going on to elementary schools, our elementary schools have made tremendous growth. In the past, we've had up to, up to three, last year we had two elementary schools that met few expectations this year. All of our elementary schools meet expectations and have, and several of them have moved up categories. And so you can see where our schools are at. So we have Merrill, Washington, Franklin, Oklon, and Webster meet expectations. Reed, Shapiro Stem Academy, Roosevelt, Jefferson, E. Cook, Oakwood, and Carl Trager Elementary exceed, and Lakeside, and our Farmer Smith Elementary significantly exceed expectations. So our elementary schools are doing a great job. And once again, for our elementary schools, growth and closing gaps, but especially growth, has been carrying and pushing their scores up with our report card ratings. So overall, we had four schools that were up a category, we had three schools that went down a category. We have four schools significantly exceed expectation, nine exceed, nine meet, and only one meets a few. So a few cautions and conclusions. I always have cautions and conclusions with data, right? So for standardized testing data, remember that these are lagging indicators and that our school and our district report cards are really just another way of looking at state assessment scores. So we presented raw numbers and percentages last month when we took a look at our state assessment scores. This is looking at them in a different way, once again, trying to equalize that playing field, comparing apples to apples instead of apples to oranges. But once again, this all happened last spring. We're, we're eight months, six months, six to eight months past this and we've had a whole lot of learning already going on. And we actually can not necessarily predict, but we know where our students are at based on our classroom assessments and assessments we use as a school district. So this is basically old news to us because we're already working on helping our students that are currently in our classrooms in front of our teachers grow right now. Also, keep in mind that state, state, district, and school report cards are moving targets, especially with the closing the gap scores because they're dependent on how the rest of the state does. So when you look at closing gaps for state assessments, like when we looked at our data last month, we were comparing groups within our district or within a school. On the district and state report cards, you're comparing a group within a school or within the district to that whole entire other group within the state. And so depending on how the state moves, you can, you can be pretty predictive within a school or within your own district, but the state moving creates it being a moving target when it comes to assessment data. And so the overall performance is going to change each year. So we're, we're trying to hit a moving target. We can do it, but we're trying to hit it. Each student at grade level and a minimum of one year's growth is where we want to be and the target we're trying to hit. Something that we are often saying to our teachers and to our students is everybody grows. And if we're concentrated on growth, we're going to hit those targets. Schools are more than just a number, a score, or a rating. We say this all the time and this week, we know that our school communities are more than just a number, a score, or a rating. We're much more than that. And all of these, all of these pieces of data and how the data is presented is just a starting point for us to look deeper into what do our students need and what do our schools need to make sure that students are college, career, and community ready? And we know that focusing on growth is going to get us where we need to go for our students. The other thing is that looking at data- The other thing is that looking at data from a school and district report card lens also helps us gauge where we are with our equity work. And we will be coming back and seeing how does our equity work impact our, our scores when it comes to school and district report cards. And finally, we know that our, our Oshkosh community knows that and understands that it takes all of us to ensure that all students, and we capitalize all because we know it's students first, right? Are college, career and community ready, though we're delivering on that promise because you can see that in our growth scores. The longer students are with us in the OASD, the better they perform due to the devotion of our OASD staff. And that pans out in many of our district data sources when we take a look at that. Any questions?
Anyone with questions or comments?
I just have one. So there's the chart and, I'll slow down, sorry. There's the chart in your presentation that shows the district report card trend over seven years. There's like six years, it's over seven year span, six years.
Yep.
I am just curious if, because I like that chart, there you go, right there. Do individual schools create these same charts and look at that? Because I find this data really telling.
Yep, so we do take a look at what the, what the trend is for a particular school. I didn't, I didn't have this, I didn't have that up there. But yes, our schools are actually very interested in what their scores are. Families have already been sent out communications on what their school's report card score is. You can go on to our district website, you can look up any school and their school report card is posted for, for anybody to see and take a look at. But our schools are keeping track of that and they're, they wait for that score to come because they want to know, did we maintain? Did we go up? Did we go down? We want to know how is our work with our students translating into the school report card. So I also want us to be cautious though when we're looking at the trends in our report card scores. Because since report cards were first came out in two thousand thirteen and I remember there was nothing in two thousand fifteen because we switched test scores and there were things going on. And then so now in two thousand twenty, the, we're, right now we're getting current information about our school report cards and district report cards may look different again. Because they will be adding in other factors to take a look at, because we know that it's more than standardized test scores. So what other things are going to be reported on that school and district report card? So yes, we pay attention to what the trend score is, but I, we also are cautious about that trend score. Because it's not always the same formula or the same rules when it comes to how that score is being reported out.
Yeah, it's a lot meanier than just that chart.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I want to thank you for your excellent report tonight and recognize the, the staff you coach and nurture. Who pour so much into the success of each of our students each and every day. There's always room for growth and it's always good to see growth. And as we say, we want to educate all the students, students first, so thank you for your work today. All right then, let's move on to workshop number three, city bus transportation with Hartwright and the board.
Dr. Herzog and the board respectfully, I do not, we do not have a slide deck for this presentation. This is more of a conversation. I would refer you to the staff report please and I'm going to go ahead and give some high level information related. And based off of that staff report in order to actively engage a conversation. The purpose of the conversation tonight is to get an idea as to some potential questions that the board may have. As well as how you would like for, giving, providing me with some direction on how you would like for me to proceed going forward with this. So the, again, the purpose of the workshop is to provide information regarding conversations between representatives from the city of Oshkosh as well as the school district. As well as the board regarding providing city bus transportation to all Oshkosh area school district students. And so I want to give a little bit of context that's related to this because I think it's pretty important. Because I know in years past, the conversation has been that, you know, there really isn't a need. Our attendance rate is definitely higher than multiple school districts around and those type of conversations. So we went back and we started taking a look, a little bit deeper dive into our data. And what we have found is that while the overall attendance rate for Oshkosh area school district remains high over the past four years. There has been a decrease of one point five percentage points between the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year and the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, our attendance rate was at ninety-five point six percent versus last school year was at ninety-four point one percent. So we're now dipping below that ninety-five percent of where you typically would like to try to remain at or above. In addition to that, we really started looking and as I mentioned before, a deeper dive into the data to really kind of determine and parse out what's, what's happening. And what we found was that students who are coming from our economically disadvantaged backgrounds. Do have a much lower percentage on the attendance rate. Which is not necessarily, you can't necessarily state that there is a direct relationship between that and having access to city bus transportation and coming to school or not. However, it is indicative of, of that type of, of information. So specifically during the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year, students who come from economically disadvantaged backgrounds had an attendance rate of ninety-three point one percent. Compared to a ninety-two point two percent during the eighteen, nineteen school year. So as you can see, it is on a downward trend, similar to what the district was. However, it is one point nine percentage points lower than the total population during this past school year, the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. So they're looking at the data and looking at it slightly different than what we may have looked at it in the past. We're definitely demonstrating that there is a need to address attendance. And again, I, I'm not here stating that there is a direct relationship between attendance rate and access to transportation. However, I am here to propose to you that I believe it's something that we need to really take a look at. Because I'm fixing to introduce to you what those conversations were into a pilot format while we were gathering data. To determine if this truly is one of the root causes for our students and accessibility to going to school. When we're looking at the feasibility, so the conversation has been that there's a proposal, if you recall, at the last common meeting. So this was between common, the common council and the Oshkosh area school board. A proposal was made that the city of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh area school district and private donations would contribute a specific dollar amount towards the cost of providing city bus transportation to students in the Oshkosh area school district. The proposal also stated that the annual contribution would occur for three years while the program is piloted and data is collected to measure its effectiveness. Which leads back to what I was stating before, whereas I cannot state with absolutes. I, I would hypothesize and it would be a hypothesis that I believe that there probably is a relationship between access and, and economically disadvantaged backgrounds. But again, that is only a hypothesis, hence why we would go into, making the recommendation to go into a pilot phase of this. The difference between what occurred on that night with the common meetings versus the more recent conversation. Is that it would be a contribution of thirty thousand dollars per organization. So that would be thirty thousand dollars from the city, the school district, as well as from private donations. We have already started looking into the feasibility of how to do this. Speaking with the city manager, we know that for the, for the transportation system, it's a slight modification to their system. Nothing of, of significant. And related to the school district, our secondary school students, all of them currently have a student identification card. We do not have that currently at the elementary school level. But we have already started exploring what, you know, the cost that was associated in order to get identification cards for elementary school students. It's approximately between four and five thousand dollars in order for us to do that. What I would state though is that I would rec, highly recommend that if this is something that you want to pursue, that we take a phased approach on this. Start with secondary students first and then let's roll it into elementary school. Your secondary school students are a little bit more mature and at a developmental level to where they would be able to navigate a bus situation or situations with, with that. And we can work on that and then, and again, continue to take a phased approach. I'm not saying don't do elementary school. I'm just saying let's, let's take a phased approach into rolling that in and to start with our secondary students. So again, those are the conversations that are occurring at this point in time. As, as your administrative team, as your superintendent, I do support this recommendation going forward. But of course, this is not my decision. It is up to the board and I need, again, I just need some additional follow-up and direction from the board. I am at your will and I will do whatever you, whatever direction you would like for me to pursue.
I have questions.
Is there any support for this from the city?
Yes. Yes, well, let me rephrase.
Okay.
They're in, they are currently in conversation right now. I know that they're going to be having conversation, I believe, next week with council, the common council on this. But if you recall during the, it was actually the common, a representative from the common council was the one who actually made the initial proposal to us. So given that they're, given that they had created a proposal, had presented it to the school board to initiate the conversations, I think a little about a month, month and a half ago now. There are about, I would state that I believe that they would be in support of this, but I cannot definitively answer that because it would, I would, I am just. I'm basing it off actions and, and, but until they, just, just like us, until we bring it into a formal vote.
We don't really know.
I don't really know. But I would, again, based off actions that I've seen thus far, I believe that there, they have enough individuals that are in support of this.
And then are we expecting another thirty K from private donations?
Yes.
Has that been, does anybody know where that might be coming from?
Yes, so we have an individual who is working on that. And that's part of the reason of bringing this conversation a little bit forward tonight as far as getting direction from the board.
So he needs to commit to something.
Yeah, so that way, and again, not a decision tonight because this is not a resolution, okay? And not only that, but we are, we're, we're, we're working on legal contracts behind the scenes. That ball's already moving. So that way, once a decision has been made, it's just a matter of, of.
How much is it if we just had an extra Cobason bus? We're talking ninety K to run a city for several city buses, right? Where kids could then ride.
All over the city.
All over the city, so.
Yes, I would, I would propose to you, Ms. Gardner, that it was, it would not be a feasible option to run a, an additional bus to pick up within the city. You would need more than one.
Okay.
Too long of a row?
Correct.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay. When were you anticipating that this might begin with the secondary students if we were to approve this?
Those are things, those are some of the details that would have to be really finalized. I knew, I know even if hypothetically, if we were to say today and everybody said, yep, we have the money, let's go forward. It would be pushing us to get to a January first or the first day of school back after winter break implementation. However, I know that expediency is something that we are aiming towards in trying to do this. At the same time, we want to ensure that we are putting the appropriate items in place so that we have a successful launch at the same time.
Other questions?
Mrs. Olmstead I think was next and then Mr. Evans.
So is the ninety thousand dollars for all students?
All students across the district.
So that'd be ninety, so if we each put in the thirty thousand now, would that money be banked then for the future if we only do it in a phase then?
Just secondary.
Does it?
That's what she means.
Does that make?
Thank you.
Yeah, so you know, I mean, if, if we each give thirty thousand, we've got ninety thousand dollars in the bank, that's for all students. But we roll it out in phases, do we bank that money then for future for, for busing? Like this would just be busing money, we can't, you know, does that make sense?
Certainly, so even on the phased approach, we may be looking at elementary later this year.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, a, a lot of it, again, is going back into the feasibility. We really have to start with secondary and then have it as a fluid process.
Okay. Part of the discussion for me is just, I'm going to throw it out there that in three years down the road, if we do this in three years in the road and we look at the effectiveness of the measurement. And if other parties pull out, how do we, and we can't afford the ninety thousand dollars to continue, how do we pull this away from our students again after three years?
That's a very good question.
Another fear of mine is putting elementary kids on city buses. Given how much trouble just Cobason has with elementary kids and they have training.
Yeah.
What are we going to do about city bus drivers and how are they going to handle children?
Right.
Concerned?
Yeah.
I'm sure we can overcome it, I guess.
That's a good point, okay.
Just these city of Oshkosh school district students, the Lourdes and Christian, have they been approached at all?
They have not been approached at this point in time. According, and I believe Ms. Schnorr explored this thoroughly for us. My, our understanding is that because this is, the, the district is committing funds towards this. We would be required to have this available to any student in the private school that would like to, to participate in that. Given that information, I believe the individual who is working on the private donation, I believe, is also going in to have some conversations with those entities as well.
And this is Monday through Sunday or just?
Saturday.
School?
No, it's, no, it's year round.
Monday through Saturday?
Yes, there's no bus service on Sunday, so it would be, it would be Monday, Monday through Saturday.
All the time.
A round.
Not just to school, it's wherever you want, okay.
And over summer?
And over summer.
So is the ninety thousand dollars a year round cost or is it a partial year cost?
So for the school district, we're talking about thirty thousand dollars.
Yep.
So ultimately it's a ninety thousand dollar commitment over three years.
For us, right.
For us.
But she was asking, but it is ninety thousand dollars between the three entities.
The agreement would be that we would be, the district would be responsible for thirty thousand dollars.
A year.
A year.
Okay.
Dr. Herzog?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just in response to that little bit, as you, for those of you that were at that, that joint meeting of the school board and the city council. How the original proposal was, was twenty-five thousand per entity to contribute. And that was based on the number that we had been using, which was sixty-nine thousand.
Right.
And that number, that number's changed over the last month and a half to reflect the true cost of what, what it would be to, to, to have students be riding that, the bus system. I mean, that, that amount reflects other entities that have also been providing bus passes to their, to their, to their programs for their, for their students. So, so there was only a partial picture of what, of what that number was. And so through the, the conversations that we've been having, it was, it was brought up that ninety thousand is, is a comfortably better number to work with than the sixty-nine thousand. And you know, we're, you know, the, the reality is that, you know, we might find out that even ninety thousand, you know, down, down the line may have to change. You know, maybe it's lower, maybe it's higher. But I think, you know, hypothetically, you know, the idea is that we don't know until we start trying to gather this data and find out what the impact and what the use of it is, so.
Other questions or comments?
I just have one more comment and it seems like I'm getting, or that there's scope creep. That the original purpose and why we were talking about this was because we had an attendance problem. And so this was a way to address that.
Potentially.
Potentially, and so this is an idea, like will this help and let's try it out, let's just see how it works. And now it seems like now we're at ninety thousand and we're going to be Monday through Saturday and it's going to be for everything. And so that for me makes me feel a little bit wonky because the purpose originally was about attendance. So I, I'm not sure I would support that.
I think one thing to also take into perspective is we do have activities that occur, there are school related activities on the weekend.
Oh, absolutely.
On Saturday. And so by providing those bus, that bus transportation, we're giving accessibility. We're also helping to, with our equity efforts to ensure that individuals who are coming from. from, potentially coming from homes that would not be able to participate in some of those activities on Saturday, now they're able to do that.
So then part of me wonders, like, if we're just going to do that, and I know we don't have the, the total amount, but then could we just fund it? Could it just be ours then, rather than trying to joint with private funding and the city? If we're going to actually attack this thing from a school standpoint, I wonder if we can then, because your concern about then the other people pulling out after.
This is something that we can always look at, you know, going forward, how do we budget for it in the future?
Yeah.
What I would encourage you at this point in time is we operate on a very tight budget.
I know.
And if we have opportunities for individuals to partner with us as we partner with them to take care of our students and within the community, I would encourage the board to take that opportunity.
Yeah, and I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm, I'm on the opposite side, I think, where if we are offering it and we're going to pay for it, it should just be during school hours, Monday to Friday during our school hours. If we're offering it Monday through Saturday and the community wants this and the city wants this, so that these kids can get to other curricular activities, they can get to work, they can go shopping, they can use the bus to help our economy, to help them get jobs, to help them be able to travel and go do things, then I do think that the city should take a portion of that to help, you know, because it, it benefits the whole city. It benefits our businesses downtown, the library, it benefits the museums that they can get to that they otherwise might not be able to.
Okay, are there other comments or questions?
Just that it kind of has always bothered me where the kids that live in the city that have to take the bus are only students that actually have to pay to get to school. If they're in the country, they, we pay for it, if they buy their bike or walk, it's free. But the, the bus, city bus makes quite a bit of money off our students just trying to get to class.
Yeah.
It's always kind of, kind of bothered me.
So I'm kind of hearing from the board that you would like for me to continue to work on this, to bring forward to you at our next board meeting a formal resolution to vote, for a formal vote, is that the?
Are we ready to vote on this before we have commitment from the city and the other donations?
Yes.
Well, I, I don't know if I am, that's why I'm asking.
Dr. Herzog?
Well, again, the way in which this would occur is this, this would be going under an agreement. So even if the board were to say, yes, we're in support of it.
They can still say no.
If they say no, then we're not in agreement.
Oh, so we're not, right, okay.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Dr. Herzog, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I think one of the, the important elements of us kind of consensusly talking about this and, or even taking a vote on it is that it, it sends a message to our, our community players that are, that are, that are investing in this. So it's, it's hard, it's hard to get commitments within, within the, within the community straight up if they, if our bodies of government haven't, haven't fully said yes or no that they're in on it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, and that's one of the challenges of waiting until all, until everything's in and everything's in place, because it, it, by not waiting, it helps those community partners be able to move forward and be comfortable and to put other things into place that, that lets the community, you know, invest a little bit more so. And I think that's, that's part of where this, where, where the timing of this is, is really, really important.
So what is the pleasure of the board? Do you want this to come back as, as a resolution next time? So that would be December 18th, that we would commit to this as a board? That, in essence, that would be how the resolution would be written and then we would expect that the city council and these private entities would match those funds? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I would keep pursuing it up until the point we need to vote on it.
Then we'll, then we'll go. Then we'll really know.
I appreciate the direction of the board on this, thank you very much.
All right. And thank you, Dr. Cartwright, for that report. Okay, moving on then, we have the consent, consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it would, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. So the board will consider approval of number one, purchase risers. So the resolution is, be it resolved, the Oshkosh area school district board of education approved the purchase of replacement choir risers as filed with the secretary to the board of education.
So moved.
Second.
Their discussion. As I read over this, it appears that the.
The price went down.
And the risers for the elementary schools are different from those at the middle school and secondary levels, is that correct? However, the risers at the elementary level are all the same, so that if one school needed an additional, to borrow additional risers, they would be compatible. And similarly, the same risers would be purchased from middle and high school, so similar, similarly, those could be borrowed and moved if necessary.
So actually, at the secondary level, risers usually don't move. And so that's why we went with the signature series because they're a lot more stable, that, that kind of thing. At the elementary level, those are the tour masters. And tour masters, just as they indicate, are able to go touring with other individuals. And so the tour masters are movable, they're smaller, so they can be stored easier and such, while all the elementaries, the tour masters. The tour masters also would be the one, the risers that would go over to the arena or other location for graduations because those are the movable ones.
Good deal.
The middle school ones are pretty.
They're the ones that are stable.
Stay. Stay where they are, okay.
Right.
And this is essentially a safety issue with risers that are approximately 20 to 30 years old in some cases.
Or actually 42 years old.
Forty-two years old.
So, yes.
Other than some of the board members present at this table.
That is.
I was two.
No comment on that, however, we can tell you that some of these, some of the risers definitely go back into the 80s. So it is time to replace them, absolutely.
Well, the safety issue is huge, I think, for all of us, and so I think it's time for a vote unless someone else has other comments or questions.
Yep.
All right, please call the roll.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Heschel?
Aye.
Heschel, aye. Salaji?
Aye.
Salaji, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Heschel?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Salaji, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Heschel?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Salaji, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Heschel?
Aye.
Heschel, aye. Salaji?
Aye.
Salaji, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Heschel?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Heschel, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Heschel?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Salaji, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Heschel?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Salaji, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye. Herzog?
Aye.
Herzog, aye. Olmstead?
Aye.
Olmstead, aye. Heschel?
Aye.
Salaji?
Aye.
Salaji, aye. Carolyn?
Aye.
Carolyn, aye. Evans?